Our council meeting is June the sixteenth, two thousand fourteen. Ms. Price, has this meeting been properly called?
Mr. Mayor, the meeting schedule was published in the December thirty-one, two thousand thirteen, January first, two thousand fourteen edition of the Henry Daly Herald newspaper. The agenda was published on the city's website and on First Pool City Hall on Thursday, June twelfth, two thousand fourteen. Yes, requirements have been met.
Thank you. But again, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to welcome you to this meeting. I'm calling on the momentarily stand in the face of the flag which will be led by Councilman Roger Hood, after which I'd like to tell a quick note about this young man who passed with Weston Land and that church by our invitation. Right?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, I got a note this afternoon from the newspaper. Staff Sergeant Jason McDonald, he grew up in Locust Row. His mother, Tina Brawl, is an oncologist nurse at Hendrick County. His father was coach of Hendrick County Middle School for a number of years, and his father unfortunately passed away in two thousand ten. McDonald was a member of the Army's first battalion, fifth special forces group, which is based out of Fort Campbell, Kentucky, according to the details released by the Army. The Department of Defense announced over the weekend that McDonald died June the ninth from wounds he sustained during a combat operation in the cause of illness. In the morning, ladies and gentlemen, I would encourage you to join me and the chief and Leslie Bealog and others here at City Hall. The family will be leaving the Methodist Church on, um, uh, land on Locust Row, headed to I seventy-five. So they're encouraging people along Bill Gardner Park Way to come and show your respects from this family, and I would encourage you to, uh, join us tomorrow. Uh, they will be at, uh, Bill Gardner Park Way at forty-two at eight oh five and leave the church, McDonald Methodist Church, at eight o'clock. Having said that, I ask, I would love for each of us to have a moment of silence, and then I want to call on the pastor of Wesley Chapel United Methodist Church, our friend and yours, Pastor Bert Nail, for the invitation. If you please join us in a moment of silence. Pastor Nail.
Let us bow our heads, O most gracious and loving God, we take time right now to pause in this busy day to honor you first and foremost before we proceed with the business of the city of McDonald. We come and pause and ask a special prayer for Staff Sergeant McDonald and his family, asking that you would comfort them and hold them close to you, God, for you and you alone know all details and all things. And we just ask that you love one another one who has become a fallen comrade for the price of freedom and for the price of the American country. God, we pray right now that you would come and be with our city council and be with all those in attendance, that you would give us simply wisdom, understanding, help us to hear your voice, understand what is best for the citizens of McDonald. Let us make good decisions and let us have righteous conversation. God, we love you so much, and we're just glad that you are present in this place. Come now, hold us all dear to you, and be with the mayor and the city council as they continue to press to do your business. We love you, we want to continue to give you glory, honor, and praise, and we ask all these things in the wonderful marvelous, magnificent name of your son, Jesus the Christ. Amen.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. My community president here in Martha, who is simply such a great woman, and I'd be grateful for that, for the people among our councilmen and members of the House.
And I taught with Mr. Rawson, and I taught his son, so it is specially dear and close to my heart.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, let's move down to item number four. I entertain motion for approval, dear gentlemen. In, second. Thank you so much. Anybody have any questions? Ms. Price, please restate the motion in a second.
The motion is to approve tonight's agenda.
Okay, would you please vote?
Seven in favor, Mayor.
Thank you so much, council. Let's move down to item number five. We have three items on the concern agenda. Each of you has an opportunity to review those, uh, A, B, and C, and with that, I entertain the motion that the concern agenda be approved. Thank you so much. In a second. Anybody have any questions?
Excuse me, one second.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, Ms. Price, any questions? Ms. Price, please restate the motion in a second relative to item number five.
Motion is to approve A, B, and C items on the concern agenda.
Okay, would you please vote?
Seven in favor, Mayor.
Thank you, council. Let's move down to item number six. I had an opportunity to see Sylvia Burge retired in the institution Sylvia turned out to be with the Board of Education. They'll miss her, but she'll continue to do some historic work for the school system, uh, certificates of recognition of her and the Thrifty Shopper. Uh, we have an opportunity, I missed that, but somebody represented me at the boutique, and I would like to make that a part of these minutes, and in so doing, I entertain the motion we make it a part of this. In a second. Second. In a second. Questions, comments? Here, now, Ms. Price, please restate the motion in a second, item number six.
The motion is to approve the certificate of recognition for Miss Sylvia Burge and the certificate of recognition for the Thrifty Shopper Boutique a part of tonight's minutes.
Okay, would you please vote?
Seven in favor, Mayor.
Okay, we had a kind of a shortfall on item number seven. Uh, I was absent, Ms. Barna was absent, and Mr. Pruitt was absent. However, his night was present and presided, and Elrod was here, Councilman Stewart, and also Councilman Vincent. And having said that, I'm sure you have not been reading the minutes, they've gone down and been there, and I don't believe I'm saying, and you says that's right, so if you had an opportunity to look at it, I would entertain the motion of minutes there for June fifth.
I move to approve.
Thank you, ma'am, Ms. Vincent. In a second. Now, motion in a second. Anybody have any questions? As you know, us, uh, the three of us cannot vote, so it's gonna take, it's gonna take the four to get these approved. Ms. Price, please restate the motion in a second.
The motion is to approve the workshop meeting minutes of June fifth, two thousand fourteen.
Okay, those that were here and voted, please vote at this end.
Four in favor, Mayor.
That's the magic number here, that's the four. Thank you so much, ladies and gentlemen. Let's move down to item number eight. The most important joint is to have one of our own here that we can recognize, and the difference he's made not only in Hendrick County, in McDonald, and other cities, but throughout the state, so I want to, uh, kind of bring you up to speed on Andy Welch. Known him all his life, well, what a wonderful individual he is. He and my son, they were Eagle Scouts, and he attends the McDonald and Queretin churches, as many of you know, here, and they have two children, beautiful lady, two children, former chairman of the Hendrick County Chamber of Commerce, what a wonderful job he did the year that he was there, and, uh, and of course, he's a partner in Hendrick County oldest law firm, which is Smelt, Welch, Welch and White. And I see his father's here, and I'm, oh, Sid. Oh, hey, buddy. Of course, you're over here, but it's wonderful to have you too here, buddy, and, and of course, I remember distinctly Andy going into U.S. Peace Corps in Ghana, West Africa. What, what a wonderful opportunity that was for this young man. He, he was good and grew, and he's so talented and so smart, he talked of science and coached soccer over in West Africa, and, uh, did a fundraising project. This is typically what Andy Welch would be making the difference in the lives of others. Of course, he went to Red Deer, nothing wrong with that. Twenty-ten, uh, in considered honor and privilege to serve the constituents of one hundred and ten district. Andy is without a doubt an outstanding native of Hendrick County, Georgia. Andy, we welcome you here tonight, and we have a young man that I just met, heard about, uh, Mr. Ruchi Patel, he's associate general counsel of GMA, Georgia Municipal Association, and I want to invite him to come forward, and he will make a few comments, and then he'll invite you to participate, and I think I will join him. Go ahead. Ruchi, we'd like to have you. Thank you for coming.
Won't you stand in front of me that everybody can see?
Every city council chamber is different. Ruchi Patel, the Georgia Municipal Association, and GMA represents five hundred and nineteen of the five hundred and thirty-eight cities in the state of Georgia, so most of the cities in the state of Georgia, and we do lobby for cities throughout the state, and at the end of every two-year legislative session, lobbying staff gets together and sits down and talks about the good and the bad that happened, and goes through some of the legislators that were key to helping cities, and we call those legislators champions of Georgia cities. And I'm proud to say that Representative Welch has received this award now twice, and, well, that's upside down, and, and he has been instrumental, not only through legislation, but through conversation. Um, you, you know, Representative Welch has represented many cities through many different actions, and at the legislature, he always is looking out for the best of his constituents, but he's also looking out for the best of Georgia. And, and so some things, it's, sometimes it's small, and sometimes it's big, and one bill this year that seems very small when you look at it, um, was allowing cities to have contracts both on a calendar year and on a fiscal year, which is amazing to think that that wasn't a possibility before, but that's something that he looked out for and said, why shouldn't cities be able to have a contract on a fiscal year? They budget on a fiscal year, they should be able to have a contract on a fiscal year. Little things like that, where he's always thinking ahead, um, how to help cities out in, in the long term. And briefly earlier today, I was having a conversation with him on the phone, talking about how I was gonna go watch the soccer game, U.S. versus Ghana after, uh, after this council meeting, and, uh, he mentioned that he's gonna be rooting for the U.S., but whoever wins, he's gonna root for the winner, and, uh, I can certainly understand why. And I would like to present Representative Andy Welch with the Champion of Georgia Cities Award, um, and here we have the City Hall McDonald, so Representative Welch. Mayor, do you mind coming down and taking a picture with Representative?
It'd be an honor to stand with you two young guys, young boys. All right. Congratulations. And I don't know if anybody, I watched people last year down in the Congress, and, and this council, this, people, my respects, for taking a part in GMA, and they went to you for leadership, and you provided all of that, and we would like you to be a part of this community, and have grown up here and make a difference in, uh, not only the lives of us as constituents here in Hendrick County, but the people in GMA, five hundred and fifty cities, and I saw last week, and also a mayor statement that they pulled you off to the side. Andy, what do you think? What do you think? You were there, Paul, so we give you a chance to say a word to you, but we're proud.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. Ruchi, and, uh, appreciate you being down here, and I appreciate you presenting this to me on behalf of the Georgia Municipal Association. I think it's important to recognize that, um, no matter what any one of us does, it's, it's because we stand on the shoulders of so many others. Um, this community was built by many, many men and women, poor fathers and poor mothers, that allowed us to, um, you know, to, to be the McDonald that we are, or the Henry County that we are. I have good colleagues in the Senate, like Senator Rick Jeffries, who is here tonight, good friends like Charles Mobley, who helped through my campaign, and I have my beloved father to thank you for who I am. You know, it's, it's your parents that, that help instill that character that makes up who we are. It's a large part of who we are as people, is based on our parents. And, uh, so I wouldn't be the person I am today if it wasn't for my mom and dad, and my dad's here today. I'm a little sentimental because his father's dead yesterday, and, uh, and, uh, so it's kind of fitting that, um, he's able to be here to see this, and, uh, and I hope that I'll be half the parent that he was to me, I'll be my grandson. Thank you.
I want to thank you again, and, and council, we're with you so happy to have this opportunity, and I, and I'm glad and blessed to recognize, and so, I had you on the notes, Governor, and I saw you back in the back. I apologize, someone took the not recognized for you, and of course, Mr. Bob, good friends of all, I was really glad to have you two here for this special presentation, of course, overall, having, having Buddy here, uh, I thought it was so fitting and so proper, so thank you again, thank you for bringing this to our attention and sharing it with us here in this council chamber, this is the more fitting place than about. Thank you so much. Lee, item number nine, you and Mr. Tell, are you taking a lead role in this, or we'll call on GMA?
Mayor, I think I'm gonna turn it over to Ruchi.
All right, Mr. Ruchi.
I think we felt this was too good of an opportunity to pass up with Ruchi being down tonight, the questions that we've had, so for that, I'm, yeah, I'm turning it over to him.
Thank you, Mike. So you got to take advantage of when you had the chance.
Right.
And I'm glad to tell, uh, as many of y'all know, there was a new major firearms legislation passed this year by the Georgia General Assembly, House Bill sixty. It was not the only firearms bill that passed this year, there was also House Bill seven seventy-three, and honestly, I'm gonna mix up the next one, but, uh, um, House Bill sixty was the major legislation that passed, you know, this year. And Ms. Price was able to send out the information, uh, PowerPoint and summary about the bill that GMA put together to y'all, uh, last week, and while I'd love to be able to go through the PowerPoint slide by slide, I'm pretty sure you guys want to go home at some point tonight. So I thought I did a few of the highlights, especially the latest government buildings. It seems to be the area that most of the questions I've been getting related to this firearms bill have come into, and so the big change is previously, under Georgia law, uh, weapons and firearms were not allowed into government buildings, no matter what, okay? And the change in Georgia law, which will go into effect on July first, is weapons won't be allowed into government buildings, and weapons are defined effectively as handguns and big knives, okay? That means they still cannot bring in long guns, uh, shotguns, AR fifteens, whatever, you know, has a long barrel. The handguns and knives would be allowed in government buildings after July first unless the city or county or whatever government has control of that government building, post security personnel at the entrances, public entrances to that building, and that security personnel screens or restricts people entering the building. Uh, screens or restricts is not defined, but it effectively means you're, you're keeping an eye on the people that are coming in. There's no requirement for metal detectors, and there's no requirement that the security personnel be post-certified. However, if the city, county, or whatever government it is wants to be able to charge license holders with a misdemeanor for entering a government building that they are not allowed to enter into, then at least one member of that security personnel has to be a post-certified officer, okay? Now, if there is no security at the government building, only license holders are allowed in the government building. That means they've actually gone through the background check, and they've paid that fee that they're paid for, and whatnot. Non-licensed holders are not allowed in government buildings at any time with weapons. Um, so that's the basic premise of the government building portion of the bill. Uh, courthouse are still off limits, and courthouse are defined as buildings that have judicial proceedings and judicial rooms. Uh, so courthouse, firearms and weapons are not allowed in those courthouse at any point, whether there's security there or not. Preferably, obviously, it'd be nice to have security at a courthouse, but it's not required by the state law. Those are the two biggest points I've been getting. One big question I've been getting lately is, can we just post a sign saying firearms or weapons are not allowed in this building? And that's not allowed. The only time you can prohibit a weapon from a government building is if you have security personnel posted at those public entrances, screening or restricting entrance. Now, another question I've been getting, well, we can't afford security from nine to five, but we have a council meeting, or zoning hearing, or something like that at six o'clock, can we not have security from nine to five and let people bring weapons in and have licenses from nine to five, but at six, when we have contentious zoning hearing, we can post security personnel? You know, maybe the city knows that a lot of people are gonna be upset about something coming in before the zoning board. And the answer is yes. We did manage to get some changes to the, the language of the legislation to say, okay, you know, the city might not want to or might not be able to post security at north of nine to five, but they might have a contentious issue at six o'clock at the council meeting or the zoning hearing, or whatever. They could come back and say, okay, we're posting at six o'clock, and from that point forward, anyone entering the building would be prohibited from bringing weapons into the building. So those are the quick rundown of the government buildings and courthouse. The bill also affects commercial service airports, um, schools, uh, it does not affect polling places, so the same laws in effect for polling places, only certified security guards or post-certified police officers allowed to carry firearms at polling places. Um, everyone else can't come within a hundred and fifty feet of a firearm at a polling place, which is important to note, because we do have a lot of elections this year. I'd be glad to take a few questions because the bill is cumbersome, and I just wanted to touch on some key points.
There are some, um...
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. There are, um, some regulations concerning whether or not we are allowed to ask if they are actually licensed. Is that correct?
Right, there, there's a provision in the bill, and it's a little confusing if, if you just give it a quick look, but what it says is, you cannot detain somebody for the sole reason of checking to see if they have a weapon stored in there. You can't ask them. That doesn't mean they have to say anything to you. So a police officer could ask, but they don't have to respond to the ask, and they cannot be detained. Detain means you can't stop them from moving around freely. Um, so there is a slight difference between asking and detaining. Um, it's something that I think police officers are trained on pretty frequently, um, and, you know, it's, it's a good nuance to know, but...
Do they have to show their license and bags?
They do not have to show their license and bags, um, and, and that was one of the, the areas of the law that a lot of folks had some issues with, um, but that's the way the legislation came about.
Okay, and also, yeah, go ahead, thank you, Mayor. Uh, this, this is, we can have a council look, uh, two churches, Wesley and Shallow, and they're concerned about, you know, people's carry gun, how do we post it in their church?
Yeah, uh, the church situation, um, so the law basically says firearms are still not allowed in churches unless the church allows them in, um, weapons and firearms, and the legislation actually did not address how a church that's prohibiting or a church that's allowing goes about in letting people know that they're doing one or the other. It's, it's actually silent to that point. I think that'd be something that the church would have to figure out for themselves as to how they wanted to let people know what they chose to do.
Other comments, anyone? Is, Andrew, you have any personal comments?
No, Mayor, I know that in our building, for instance, you know, we have, um, some floors, of course, that are secured with door locks and that sort of thing, but for instance, we have a third floor that doesn't even have that, so I was thinking, sitting here thinking, as you were commenting about the provision that allows, once you post security downstairs, say for a contentious zoning hearing, or a contentious council meeting, that the law, you know, that kick in the provisions, um, but I don't think that we could really effectively implement that on a four-by-four basis, you know, I mean, just trying to think through how that would play out.
Yeah, and, and the legislation actually says security posted, uh, controlling ingress into the building itself.
Right.
So, I mean, it's actually the easiest way to do it, and it's the way the law requires is at the door downstairs, so, yeah.
Anyone else? Phil, thank you so much. Yeah, uh, hey, boss, and, uh, President, thank you very much. Thank you.
I'm gonna go watch some soccer if you got time.
It's for you, it's for you, all right. I have another presentation, let's move down to the second page, item number ten, I see Tim, and, uh, I just saw the board through Phil, and this problem, I have two friends involved, and, uh, uh, welcome, good to see you, young man.
Mayor, not Mr. Alman, he didn't make it. No, but Mr. Alman couldn't make it, he, uh, he had a death in the family, so I'll all carry the feeling for him, um, so if y'all keep giving him your prayers as well. Like to thank the mayor and the council for this opportunity, uh, to visit with you briefly this afternoon to present an award to two of your employees. Uh, first, I'd like to say that the mission of the Henry County Soil and Water Conservation District is to promote the live use of natural resources, water, plant, and animal resources, which are the key cornerstone for the city's economic growth and the health and mental well-being of our citizens. We focus on a partnership approach with the city of McDonald, the county, Georgia Water Soil and Water Conservation Commission, National Resource Commission, and a array of other organizations to accomplish our mission. We're very pleased that the city is one of our key partners. The nature of our partnership activities are spelled out in a memorandum of agreement that was signed several years ago. As a result of the agreement and passage, uh, of the county erosion central control boards, uh, and the city was certified as the local issuing authority, therefore giving the city the authority to review and approve land serving activity permits. Today, we have an efficient and smoothly operating process to which to thank you and your employees in this regard. This evening, I wish to recognize two of your employees for their dedication, uh, diligence and professionalism in working with the city's responsibilities and duties under the terms of this memorandum of agreement. They meet, they meet with us monthly, at our monthly meetings, report on the activities and the work in a timely and efficient manner to resolve issues of concern. Thanks in no small part that their efforts of the city is doing a very efficient job in helping to ensure that the land serving activities safeguard soil and associated plant and animal resources as well as protect and enhance our water quality. It's my honor to bring, uh, to you this afternoon, uh, a high honor and to present the certificate of appreciation to your boys, uh, Mr. Dodson, Mr. Whitlock, if you'll come in here, please.
Surprise.
Mr. Cook, my quick mayor, this, this certification of appreciation says, "For demonstration of leadership, creativity, and dedication that results in safeguarding soil, water quality, and associated natural resources in Henry County," from the State Soil and Water Commission. Signed by Mr. Avon, our chair. And also in the back is Ronnie Turk, one of our chairmen.
Ronnie Turk, how you doing? Nice to see you. Just all of them, thank you, and thank you so much. Congratulations. Thank you so much, thank you so much. Congratulations both of you. Prince, being here, good to be, making that presentation.
Thank you.
Have a good night here with the ward, Andrew and Thomas, who's two coming in. Let's move down to item number eleven, and Mr. Nixon and Ms. Brady, I don't know who's taking the lead role, but we welcome your presentations.
Somebody, Mayor, who's, uh, who's a group design studio, who's been our landscape architect for Big French Park, and he is here to present to you, um, his vision for the entrance from forty-two to... to the park, and also the pavilion as part of the second contract, which was not under the grant that we had from E.P.D., so we decided to separate that out. But he's here with his propositel for the remainder of the park-like elements in Big Spring Park.
Can I use it?
Yes.
Trying to figure out the best way to get all this displayed so everybody can see it. Thank you. Like Emily said, we're, this is basically an update to the continuing design for this park, and I'll try to turn this so that hopefully everybody can see it at least a little bit. But what we're, what we're talking about today are three specific, actually, two specific pieces of the park improvements in Big Spring. This is the overall plan for the park, which shows the detention pond, which is currently under construction. We've got a walking trail around the pond, a boardwalk component down here, which we've already discussed, and then we've got a open-air pavilion in this corner, which we'll talk about in a second here, and then a pedestrian connection that makes, that connects the lanestry to the park itself and creates basically a kind of a front door entrance for the park on Lanestry. So the first thing we'll talk about is the pavilion itself, which you can see on the overheads. This is a design that we came up with for the pavilion. It's an open-air pavilion. It's a fairly simple timber structure. There are two-foot granite columns at the base of each post, and then you have a wooden post that extends over, so that the roof line is a height of about nine feet. Standing seam roof with a pretty standard timber truss frame underneath that, with some architectural details that, that I think will kind of elevate the level of design for the park and for different park elements and sitting with it forward. Do you want to put the plan in there? This is a plan view of that same structure, which gives you an idea of the overall size. On the, basically, we've got a front porch here, which would connect to the park this way, and then this long axis is about twenty-eight feet by about twelve feet this way. To give you an idea of the relative size, the pavilion at Alexander Park is about thirty by thirty-five, so this pavilion would fit inside of that. It's not as big, which is something that we talked about during the initial design. We didn't want a place where you could have big events, but a place where, you know, a few people might be able to gather to enjoy the park. The pavilion is actually positioned to look out over the pond, across the fountain, and you would actually see the clock tower in the background with the, with the park in the foreground. So it would be a really, really nice amenity for the park itself. Now we'll talk about the, the more complicated feature, which is this pedestrian connection from Lanestry, and if anybody's familiar with this area right here, there's about a twelve-to-fourteen-foot grade change from Lanestry to the trail elevation through those woods, and that's where we're looking at creating basically an observation tower or an observation plaza around it, not a tower. But this would be a place where you would enter on foot from Lanestry. You've got an entry plaza off the existing sidewalk, which is a ten-foot radius plaza, very simple with a couple of granite seat walls, and then you would enter the, the observation plaza along an eight-foot sidewalk to a twenty-foot radius plaza in the middle there that would overlook the entire pond. So you'd be up at about twelve or fourteen feet elevation above the pond, and you'd have this commanding view over the entire lake, which would be really, really nice. This piece was primarily designed not only as, as a front door to the park, but really as an interpretive and educational piece for what we're trying to do with the park. The fact that this is a stormwater facility, that we're creating a park amenity for the residents to, to use and appreciate, we want to also educate people that come to visit as to why the pond is there in the first place, why stormwater is important, why a facility like this is, is critical for the city's infrastructure. So there are elements in this design that, that speak to that and kind of celebrate water and stormwater all the way through.
With it being on a very small scale like this, this is a backyard scale, so you have the full detention pond project, which should help alleviate the flooding concerns in the area, but, but this is more of a hands-on, this is what you could do in your backyard in order to help with this same stormwater issue.
Do you want to put the, the black on this plan? So this plan is just, has a little bit more detail to it, and some of, I'll just briefly talk about some of those educational interpretive elements to give you an idea of, of some of the things that we're talking about here. As you come down that, that main eight-foot sidewalk, the center of the sidewalk would be a band of, of pavers. The sidewalk itself would be a reverse crown, familiar with the way Rosen built, usually their crown to shed water off. This would be crowned to actually collect water along that paper band, and it would lead down to a low point here, right before you get to the, the overlook plaza, that's essentially a decorative storm drain. So that whole procession down to the observation plaza is walking down a storm channel. And then as you get to the plaza itself, it's framed with two seat wall, granite seat walls, and then right at the entrance, there's a three-foot freestanding wall, which would have the letters that spell out the name of the park, and then a built-in fountain, which again celebrates that idea of water. I'm not sure that's good. This is a concept idea of what you would see as you enter the park. That would actually be a curved wall that would be about three feet tall, and it would have that fountain built into it. In front of that fountain, there would be a little basin that would collect the water and recirculate through the fountain system. And then immediately behind that, you've got this twenty-foot diameter observation plaza, which again looks out over the pond this way. And from that point, that plaza, again, is designed as a, as a self-contained watershed. So inside that twenty feet, all the water that falls within that falls to the center space, which is a rain garden. So the water would collect at that rain garden in the center space, which would be landscaped with appropriate plants for that kind of landscape. You'd have an interpretive sign in the middle that would explain, you know, what all is going on, because watersheds, for most people, are very kind of abstract concepts, hard to visualize, and they're so big, and this puts it on a very human scale. You've got a twenty-foot diameter circle that's a self-contained watershed, and the majority of it is actually paved. So again, that speaks to, you know, what happens within a watershed when we have all this impervious surface and what do we need to do with it? And one of the solutions is at the center of that space, which is actually a rain garden. Then at the very edge of that plaza, you would have a retaining wall with a handrail that allows you to look out over the pond itself, so you can kind of get an idea of the, the grade change. This is the trail level down here. You can see that. That's the trail level at the park, and this is the elevation that you would be standing on that observation plaza. The plaza would have two circular half-circle stairways that come down along that granite retaining wall, and then at the bottom landing of that, you would have a second fountain that would be really primarily viewed from the, from the pond side. That fountain would be recessed into that retaining wall, and again, would have that waterfall effect. That would create a really striking backdrop for the stairs that lead down to the pond itself, and I envision that to, to really be a, a spot for photo shoots, for weddings, and parties, and things like that. It would also be a really interesting space to stand and look out over the pond. And then the stairs that spill down from that are, are designed, they open out, so they're designed kind of like a grand staircase modeled after the, the Spanish steps in Italy, if anybody's ever been there. This is a much smaller scale, but, but it, yeah. Again, that, that is a space that I can see people eating their lunch, you know, looking out over the pond, reading books, or, you know, having, having different photo shoots on the steps themselves. So, you know, all those spaces have multiple functions, but they're all primarily designed around that idea of, of water and stormwater and the importance that that plays in, in our society. So that's really the, the big picture for, for those components. And if anybody has any questions, I'll go ahead and open them up.
I'm thrilled. I'm absolutely thrilled, because when we started this, they had to put up with me saying, what type of pond is it going to be? Is it just going to be a hole with mud? I wanted water. I wanted them to guarantee me there was going to be water, that it was going to, in fact, I got Mr. Whitley to go look at a good example. I believe it was up at, uh, Squirrel, was it? To see how beautiful a retaining pond could be utilized in the middle of municipal buildings and the trail system and what have you, because we are not used to seeing, you know, how you can utilize something that is truly functional and truly needed, and it becomes something really aesthetically beautiful and pleasing, you know, to the whole community. And this is also what I have been talking about that we desperately need between Hampton and Jonesboro Street as we approach the creek area, you know, the low area, and when we left this last week from a council meeting and it was storming, driving down Jonesboro Street, literally had to pull over to the side because it was so much rushing water down Jonesboro Street, as I'm sure there was down Hampton. We desperately need a similar situation put there, and with new impervious surface being proposed with the one-way pair crossover and connection, this is even, needs to be even addressed, you know, far more. But we desperately, like we needed the stormwater addressed coming down Lawrenceville Street and, and that, and Atlanta Street forty-two, we needed something addressed there. We desperately need it just as much down Jo, uh, down Hampton and Jonesboro Street. But this is beautiful. I, when you were talking about the waterfall, I was thinking about the infinity pool. Yes, it drops off, it disappears, and there it is again, and, and I just, you know, I could not be happier for this community and more proud of this council, mayor and council, for going through this process, of really, you know, beginning to become involved in understanding what an opportunity we truly had. And I know for a fact that Ms. Emily was thrilled at the thought of having this, along with the planning department. They were thrilled, and I can't say enough to Mark Whitley for putting up with me, because he said, Ms. Gail, he said, if it'll make you happy, I'll just go up there and look. I promise I'll look. I said, well, when you look, I promise when you come back, you won't have the same thought. And he came back, and I said, so is that the kind of pond you were building? Oh, no, ma'am. So I'm thrilled for all of us.
Comments?
Yes, sir. Michael, I'm gonna call you genius for the evening. I just love the balance that you've created between the utilitarian use and the aesthetic. That's, that's just absolutely wonderful. I did want to mention a couple of observations that I made, one having to do with the design of the porch. It is reminiscent of a train depot, which I absolutely love, because one of the things that we're trying to do is to really promote the city of McDonough as the train community that we are historically. So I think that that element has the potential of being kind of reproduced in other future projects, especially in light of the fact that it overlooks the clock tower. I think that's, that's wonderful. Another point that I wanted to make is, oh, I remember, okay, thank you. Because this is a, a stormwater project, I think one of the things that you've kind of tipped on is, is the fact that this area has a great historic component. This is the origin of the city of McDonough, and so even though this has been developed into a park, a great use of, of design in, in terms of addressing stormwater, there's also a possibility for us to push the historical element a little more and make this actually a tourist destination. So I, I would like to see some additional integration of the actual history of the site, whether that be on a marquee and papers or whatever, but I, I think that there's definitely that opportunity, and, and then this becomes a, a destination not only for those who live here, but those who will also visit our community.
We discussed, especially with the interpretive signage going in the center of the overlook, one of the initial plans was also for interpretive signage along the outside edge of the walking trail that highlighted the history and the ecology of the site and the, the history of the park. So that, that's something that we will work towards writing, and we'll bring that.
I know when you look down into the existing, and I don't know what you call that, where the creek is, some of those firms are absolutely beautiful now. So just maybe recognizing some of the botanical components and, and just the history of them.
Yeah, I, that presentation was great, and our materials states that stormwater waste, or stormwater utility actually bear the cost of this.
Yes.
Got a couple of other big projects that are pulling from that fund as well.
Yes.
I'll be sure we can, we can handle both, because I know the park restoration is, is coming out of as well.
That is in the budget for this next year. That's already been set, and I actually budgeted, assuming that we would take over a hundred percent of that project.
Okay.
So we're down considerably on that. Thanks to your charity in the county, and we have plenty of stormwater reserve money that we're looking to spend on future construction projects and develop this one.
I just want to make sure we don't get overextended on it.
I agree. Thank you.
And we, we do still, Mayor, have one section of the stream that we, the city absolutely needs to address with the county. Okay? And thank you very much.
All right. Anyone else? Just completing that gateway to downtown McDonald's.
That was Michael's pleasure to have you. Thank you for being here, making that presentation. This will be exciting for us, and as I just told, this is how we never changed the day. We hope that we can help improve and indicate about the county's art, cost of way, and we'll be going out in the next game, and see what we can come up with. You can judge what you're doing, and what can be a plan to do to improve that area, add this old piece to it, and put all the work, and thanks.
Mr. Mayor, if we could have a motion for the, if it pleases the council to approve the design and to allow staff to go out for bid on this project.
And?
Some would.
Sir? You have any questions?
I have a, do we have any, what's the cost here?
The pavilion is estimated to cost around sixty thousand dollars, and this is the, just the pedestrian connection. The total cost is estimated around a hundred and forty, a hundred and fifty thousand. And this is budgeted for within the stormwater.
Thank you. Part of that land was Georgia D F T right away. Did they ever deed it to us?
They have not. They need to see construction documents before they will give us the, the deed to that, but that's... But that is something that once we go and we get a little bit into this, we will certainly be...
Yes, sir, council. Did you, please, you have a comment?
Mayor, yes, I did. And councilman approved it just to sort of follow through on that train of thought. Once the project, the bid documents are prepared, I mean, that'll all come back to you guys again so that you can, they'll have a proposal from staff on the most responsive bidder, and you all have an opportunity to consider it again and review everything again and before you contact whatever finalizing construction options.
Any other questions? Ms. Price, we have a motion. And second on the floor, please share that motion with us and let us move forward with this item.
And Mr. Mayor, if you'd like to see a second, please. Thank you. The motion is to approve the design as presented tonight and allow it to go out for bid.
Okay, would you please vote with me, gentlemen?
Seven. Oh, I'm sorry.
Seven in favor, mayor.
Thank you, ma'am.
Um, we are taking care of the footpath lighting and things of that nature.
All right. Ladies and gentlemen, if you have a copy of our testimony down at item number 12. Chief, would you please come forward? I know you don't have a presentation back in your office, and we welcome you to the show.
Yes, thank you, mayor. I want to invite Major Ken Ogle and Sergeant Paul Concher to the front, please, before we start the ceremony. Mayor, council, it's my honor tonight to present to you Sergeant Paul Concher for the last time. We are here to promote him to the rank of lieutenant. Let me give you just a quick background about Sergeant Concher. He joined the McDonald Police Department in February of 2006. He came from Georgia Tech. He was a K-9 officer at Georgia Tech. Sergeant Concher has served in several capacities with McDonald Police Department, patrol division, training, and he was also over our special operations division. He currently serves as the commander of the Office of Professional Standards since September of 2013. Sergeant Concher is a vital part of our state accreditation process and his expertise, we hope to have the department decrepit by earlier 2015. Before we swear him in, I'd like to invite his family members to come forward and stand with him as we give him the oath of office.
Welcome, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome, councilmen.
Sergeant Concher, if you'll raise your right hand, please, and take the oath. I, Paul Concher, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Georgia, the ordinance of the city of McDonough, the rules and regulations, practices, procedures of the McDonald Police Department that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the police lieutenant of the McDonald Police Department. I do further swear our firm that as a police lieutenant, I will faithfully serve and protect to the best of my ability all citizens regardless of race, color, and creed. We also have a person. Mayor, council, it is my honor on behalf of McDonald Austin from the McDonald Police Department to present you Lieutenant Paul Concher.
Lieutenant, grab it.
At this time, we'll give Lieutenant Concher a couple of moments to make some comments, please. I'd just like to say I appreciate the opportunity to work for the city of McDonough. It was my third year to work for the city of McDonough 15 years ago. I apologize if I said that before. I also like to celebrate the opportunity to be a part of leading this department with continued success and fulfilling the needs of the community.
We're so proud of you, having you live in sunny. Thank you so much for being a part of this. And what a wonderful night it's been, chief. Thank you again for sharing that information with us and giving us opportunity to recognize this young man. Okay, good herd. Heard we've got, we have an item on the island rezoning, and this is in Vincent District. And she had some concerns early on, and I think she's been in Vincent, Vincent City neighborhood, in that neighborhood. So we welcome you to the voting, please, chairman. Any information you have, any questions, and hopefully the routine, okay?
Thank you, mayor, and members of council. With respect to time there, I'll move it back to you and councilman. We have briefly spoken before we started the meeting, so I'll...
Mayor Colwell, I asked Speaker Rodney earlier about postponement of the last meeting.
Did you want to pay the motion?
Seven in favor, mayor. Skip the July workshop or the regular meeting?
Regular, I mean, what's the regular janitor's law?
Uh, July 21st, mayor.
July 21st. Council, we don't have any problem with that, do we? Postpone it. Council?
Lou, oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were talking to the councilmembers. I apologize. No, mayor, that would be fine. Just get it properly out of the house.
Anybody have another question? Here's mine, Ms. Price. We have a motion. We have a second on the floor. Let's move forward.
Okay, I know councilman Goodson laid it, but who second it, please?
I did, Goodson.
The motion is to postpone the rezoning of the North Valley Cretion, the entire development until the July 21st, 2014, councilmate.
Would you please vote, members of council?
Seven in favor, mayor.
Seven in favor. Thank you, Rodney. Rodney, let's move down to James Craig, bad for Nissan and McDonald's. And that's in this Vonder's district. How about bringing that matter of attention? We'll go through the routine of rezoning of this project.
Yes, thank you, mayor and members of council. What we're here tonight is to consider the approval for the rezoning of the subject property to C3 with new conditions. This is to, in order to allow for a custom architectural design for the proposed dealership by Nissan and including necessary modifications to the site layout for orientation of the proposed building. The applicant did want me to notify you before we start our proceedings, and on behalf of myself and to the state of Cosi with your business development, that Nissan Development will employ 80 to 100 individuals initially, with the goal to eventually grow to 150 to 175 employees. So they just want to make sure that to include that information for the review. Mayor, you have a copy of the ordinance before you and the conditions. They have been tailored specifically for this site. And that is consists of eight acres that is part of the parent tract we discussed at the workshop. I'll return it back to you, we'll just make the time. We have two representatives, if you'll step to the podium, please.
Yes, ma'am. Come forward, and just come to the podium, draw up, state your name, well.
Nicholas Mert, I represent the owner of the project.
My name's Tamping, and I am here on behalf of Mr. Craig James.
Oh, there.
Yes.
Give it up to either one of you to share any comments relative to this matter that we have before us tonight. Pardon? If you have any comments you might like to make relative to our rezoning request we have before us tonight. We're so invited to have you in this community.
We look forward to it. I don't have any specific comments myself, but if there's any questions, I can address you.
They were, the applicants were provided a copy of the final document just to double check before we start the nice meeting if there was any other concerns or issues that we're going on that.
So, thank you. Okay. Any councilmen have any question, these newcomers to the new problem thing, right?
I guess the only question I have is, I know we, at our last workshop, we had a long conversation with the whole council that's here. Nothing major's changed since that day, is that fair to say?
Yeah.
Rodney, nothing, there's so many changes since the workshop.
Yes, I clarified a question they had before we start the meeting.
Great, thank you for being here. Thank you.
Bill, just a moment here, this is in this Vonder's district. Ms. Vonder, do you have any comments or comments that you might like to share, questions of the applicants?
No, um, this, Rodney, with these, um, with this building conditions for the exterior facade signed in Toyota, McDonald Toyota, and will sign it down?
The structure, the structure of the text, yes, it allows for the custom design. And for those who were in the audience who may have been at the workshop, councilman, I'm putting you have a copy of the document.
Anybody have a question? Any other question? Thank you so much for being here. I'm gonna open the public hearing at this time, ladies and gentlemen. Let's see how many minutes I've got on. I've got a total of 10. If you would like to address this rezoning request, there's a total of 10 minutes. And we welcome you to the vote. If you please state your names, and we would ask those and we'll speak in favor of the coming first. Rezoning of eight acres. Nissan and McDonald's, anyone? Likewise, those who are in opposition to this rezoning, you too are welcome to the poll. And you too have ten minutes. This time, members of the council, I'm gonna close this public hearing and call on Ms. Vonder. Or any comments you might like to make, and then we'll vote. Ms. Vonder?
Um, I have really had no comment other than that I'm glad to know that they're bringing a possibility of 80 to 100 employees into the city of McDonough. It's always a great news to know that they're opening up employment opportunities for our citizens. With that being said, I would just like to make a motion for approval.
Councilmember, you have one more opportunity to question. You have a motion in second on the floor. Rezoning to C3, the condition, eight acres. That's Avalon Parkway.
Folks, I guess I'm having a problem, but I'm not hearing y'all. Who second it, please?
Director, steer. Ms. Vonder. Councilman, anyone have any question, any comments? Here's my Ms. Price, please share the motion and the second on the floor, and then we'll vote.
Regarding ordinance 14-06-16-001Z, on behalf of Nissan of McDonald's, the motion is to approve the rezoning to C3 highway commercial with new development conditions.
Okay, would you please vote, ladies and gentlemen?
Seven in favor, mayor.
Seven in favor. Thank you so much for being here, and we look forward to the great relationship here with the city of McDonough and the difference that you think we'll make. For the week, probably, is a day I've never let out as a result of action of this council, and you all can know what that is, which is very, very positive. So you'll be here in front of us momentarily, and we welcome you to this meeting tonight, and we encourage you to come back. Thank you so much. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, let's move over to item number 14. I'm gonna call on our city administrator, Mr. Gordon. And this will be the final of budget hearing in the city of McDonough. We will have one item to consult according to the city attorney. I'm gonna call on Mr. Gordon to give you the presentation, and then we'll open this up for discussion. Mr. Gordon?
Yes, sir, mayor. David, one more second. The color on the scene is just one. Totally different from what was actually being projected. But, yes, sir, mayor and council, this is our scheduled public hearing for the adoption of the budget. Fiscally, a FY15 budget that would start July 1st and end June 30th, 2015. As you know, we started this process back in November, December, with our budget calendar that outlined our strategy for going through the budget. Outside the last four, five months, we've had numerous presentations to you guys regarding the budget, looking at our expected revenues, our requested expenditures, bringing those into balance, bringing forward a recommendation. And then from there, we had some alternative recommendations to address by the council to us, and we brought those to you as well. And so we're here now with basically two items to discuss regarding our next year's fiscal budget. Specifically, just to kind of give you the two options. One's adopt the budget as presented for the $12.4 million. That's an increase of right around $579,000, $78,000 from the present year's budget. Some of those costs are captured in our group insurance over time. We talked about our two storm events that hit us this year and just being a little bit more prepared to address those, our software update and maintenance. As you know, we're transitioning to our, utilizing our software, and one of those is to upgrade our current system from a six to, I think, 10 in code, as well as other software that we utilize and our supplies, which a lot of those are captured under our police department, which are now upgrading a lot of their updated equipment. The other option on the table which came forward in May 19th was for us to look at addressing the issue of additional public safety personnel and facilities, and specifically addition of four firefighters to enhance fire protection, additional police officers. We added three or four police officers in the last year's budget. And what that would mean in terms of financing outside of the adopted budget that we presented was that we looked at the options and came back, recognizing the disquests were somewhat more than that. I think we had originally four firefighters, four police officers, two public works personnel. We pared it down to this and basically looking at the current rate of 0.0043 or 4.3 mils to 4.9 mils to probably tax to fund those additional public safety offices and facility. To kind of give you a brief history of where we were, and I know this summer, this is repetitive to you. And we started this process, in essence, we were looking at in terms of our options, citywide, which they just showed you as general fund, but citywide, this includes all of our funds, our stormwater funds, our wastewater funds, and our other special funds, which is SPOS. And what that means from the current year's budget, most of that is captured in our SPOS under around $2.8 million that we budgeted for the SPOS four revenues. And as we discussed at the last meeting, our SPOS revenues, SPOS four revenues are coming in above projection, and hopefully that stays input. With the addition of the new Nissan and the new Kia, as well as the hotel and the restaurants that are coming in, we've got the furniture store that's looking wonderful and coming out of the ground. And when they start opening up for their doors, we'll see some additional revenues coming from those and some other expected commercial activities in the area. But when we talk about option two, what that would mean, once we put all of our funds together, looking at about a $25 million total fund operations. Where do we start out? Let me start with the department heads backing in February, March. We got a request, total request from our department heads of right around $14.1 million. And requests from the department heads, and we've gone through the last couple of months, we pared down right around 1.7 of that, which is above the revenues projected for the general fund. Since that time, when we came to you with that $12.4 million, we've had the request for additional public safety as it relates to fire and police, specifically funding the fire department, which would allow our fire department to now cover more than one issue. And I've given the example, and I'll give it again. It's as though, if I use an example, Ms. Gertrude that lives at 50 Lawrenceville Street called because she feels she's having a heart attack by Station 51... because she feels she's having a heart attack by station one, five, uh, station fifty-one responds, that apparatus goes over to fifty Lawrenceville Street, well, to address Miss Gertrude. At the same time or shortly thereafter, Mr. Tony on Sloan Street has a grease fire in his house. And so Mr. Tony calls nine one one and he gets station, fire station one at the county. That's out there in that obese restaurant in the county annex. So they come and they start screaming now industrial over the highway twenty eighty-one and lo and behold, as they cross Phil, uh, Phillips, um, there's a train. So now he's at a dead stop, so he calls dispatch and say, hey, I can't make it. So he calls, dispatch calls fire station seven, which is right there between Eastlake and campground. Could I be wrong, chief?
Cap, right off.
So that's where they respond from. So all that time, Mr. Tony is expecting that the fire apparatus right around the corner should have responded to him by this time and guess what? They're hiding. Because what we even knows that we don't have enough manpower to send one apparatus at a time. Uh, and that's one of the reasons why when we talked about looking at the fire department and public safety be cut from the request from the police department because we added to them last year versus adding, uh, and keeping the fire, the fire folks this year. Uh, one of the other things that we have in terms of public safety was our, um, court facility. And if you've ever been to the courts on a Thursday, you recognize what we're talking about in terms of we need to update the facility. We're kind of carrying right around forty thousand dollars a year just to rent the trailers that have been there almost ten years, so we do the last eight years, so do the last forty times eight. We tell you how much money we invested in two outdated trailers that pretty much probably worth less than ten thousand dollars. Um, as well as the maintenance on that old church facility that we've been paying over the cost of these years. And it doesn't provide adequate safety and it doesn't provide adequate notification in terms of that. Our folks are meeting with their attorneys, there's no space for them to do so in the current facility. We don't have holding areas in that facility as well, which makes it problematic. Um, this has been something that was addressed as part of the SPOS, um, four, SPOS three. So what was the focus area when we started looking at our budget? We were talking about upgrading our technology. Um, since I've come on board, that's been something that I've been driving home is our utilization of technology and some of this is what we're doing now and you see some of the issues we have because when you look at the screen here, it's totally different in terms of color from here because the equipment outdated. We need to change this stuff here. Uh, one of the other issues we want to do with our technologies, get away from using a handheld camera and actually truly putting a system in here to allow for us to show our meetings, on our court meetings, to our residents to can attend, um, and being able to live stream on archive that facility. Um, in terms of techn- of technology upgrade, looking at how do we move away from XP systems? As you know, Microsoft will all go, take maintenance on XP systems. We still have some of that sitting in here today. Um, upgrading our service system, which has been outdated. Um, one of the key things I recognized coming here was that we have our service system on the third floor of a third, three-story building and we back up in the same spot. So guess what happens if we were to have a tornado? It takes off the top of this building. City government has effectively done, um, because we're not backing up offsite. Um, so part of this is to make sure that we have a service system that backs up that will be used to do us the Vermeer building, but our public safe, uh, public works department and putting the service system in there, um, and updating our Wi-Fi. That's one of the things we put on this plus to update our Wi-Fi. So a lot of our technology and also document image, um, being able to basically take a lot of our documents, scan them and make it electronic, which makes them easier for us to make them accessible to you in public. Um, you don't have to call us, it'll be out there on the internet, you'll be able to just go and look at it. Uh, unified development code, that was one of, one of the major projects, uh, for when we could have tested. We've been utilizing some of our kid codes and now it's time to update them, uh, put them in a unified system that if a developer comes in, he knows exactly what's required of him and he doesn't have to worry about somebody trying to interpret multiple codes. So the city plan, nothing irritates me more than to see staff caught in the conundrum between what was adopted, what wasn't adopted, how old the code is, doesn't address, and how many variables we need to be projecting. Got to get away from that. Uh, we talked about public safety, uh, management and organization. Uh, one of the mayor's key initiatives this year was to look at our management and organization through a study and we're in that process now. Um, when we added, uh, paid compensation to get a three hundred and sixty view of our organization, I was just looking at the structural organization, how it's managed for the children, where our folks are getting paid based on the current standards. Um, so that gives us a full view of our organization. Uh, transportation projects, you know, we've had the long suburban, one way pairs. We've got the downtown street stakes that will actually tie into what you guys just saw in the Big Springs Park. Uh, a lot of those projects are outdated and need to, to get involved in and a lot of intersection improvements we want to do as part of this plus, a part of this mission. When we talk about the general fund revenues, the bulk of our city revenues in the general fund comes from taxes. And I'll break down what that tax means in terms of that. License and permits, um, about fourteen percent, um, fines and charges about fourteen percent per hotel, not hotel, hotel, but with our general government, right around four percent. And these are statistically because they're so close, that's why they're coming up with zero percent, one percent, four percent. But our bulk of our revenues on the general fund side are paid through taxes. When we talk about taxes, we're not in the property taxes, one hundred and thirty-one percent, but statistically speaking, our lost, our sales tax makes up almost the same amount. So almost people in terms of what you pay. And let me talk about sales tax, that's as we grow, uh, what we call one of our economic engines, I live in the downtown, which you see, rest of us on the interstate recognize that somewhere around forty percent of the revenues we get don't come from people, folks that live in the city. Probably more than that, coming from folks that travel up and down the interstate, folks from Butts County, Lamar County, Spalding County, and you all you gotta do is walk around the park and look at the tides on Saturday at, uh, Coles or J.C. Penney's or, um, Toys R Us and Babies R Us, look at the tides. That's a lot of who you'll see in here because guess what? We're now worrying that inside of the segment and we're seeing a lot of that, and we're talking about that. Um, insurance premium tax, that's another major source of revenue. Um, we get from the, a lot of insurance that have been living in the city. Um, that's grown dramatically from the last census period of four hundred thousand to one point one. Uh, franchise, which is basically where we charge Georgia Power, Comcast, uh, Charter, those guys for putting their equipment in our right when they pay us a fee. Um, that's right around one point one million dollars. Occupational tax, um, is basically where we charge for what we used to know as business license, um, and then financial institution. When we break down our budget, we look at our budget from personnel, purchasing contract services, supplies, machinery and equipment and payment to others. And so when we compare it to this current year, we just slightly go by about two hundred thousand, which is kind of broken down for you guys earlier. Um, purchasing contract service actually has decreased this year, even though we've got a management study on the unified development code. Um, supplies are up and we kind of talked a little bit about where our supplies is going on the most part on the high end. Um, machinery reason tools is pretty much statistically even between seventeen thousand and twenty-two. And our payment to others is up. Um, and that's because of the activity that goes on in our courts. Um, the more we adjudicate cases, the more we're meant to have to pay to those, um, funds that deal with victim assistance, jail fund, uh, drivers have the training, so, and it's probably eight or nine dollars to be able to pay one of these two on, um, on a basis based on our, our activities going on in this report. So let me talk about the general fund budget and what that means in terms of breaking down on those two categories. Sixty-eight percent of our, um, general fund expenditures come from personnel and then most government, that's what you're gonna see. Um, the people are most expensive, they are number one resource, that's our people. Um, and they make up sixty, that's our salaries and benefits, overtime and all of those other stuff to show in that category. Um, next then is our purchasing contract services at eighteen percent, supplies at eleven percent, and payments to others right around three percent, machinery research is pretty, pretty low. And so we break that down even more for you so you could get an idea of bi-function, what's, what's happening by function. Um, general government, public safety, highways and streets and parks, um, community development and economic development. Basically, the bulk of our cost in the general fund goes to public safety. So unlike any other jurisdiction that you go into, that's pretty much gonna be where they are because those are typically your biggest departments, next to your public works department. Um, those are typically large departments and as I was giving before, the jurisdiction I came from, they're around seventy, almost eighty percent of their general fund revenue goes towards police and tire, um, mostly police. But their challenges are different from ours at this point. And so that's a breakdown right there, about fifty-four percent. Uh, general government makes up about twenty-two percent and that's basically mayor, council, city administrator, finance. Um, and finance is where it is because we pay insurance. We have to pay insurance for our cars and that cost continues to elevate. Um, and our IT is up because we're making investment in our technology, upgrading our systems. So when we talk about the other recommendation that came from mayor, council, what, what did that mean in terms of from our twelve point four, um, and going to twelve point nine? This is the breakdown of, of cost, about whatever cost the fund goes in the general fund, um, and the recommendation for the increase in the miller's rate. And what that will look like, you know, hoping you guys can read this. So on a hundred thousand dollar home, um, we don't tax you on the full value of your home, we tax you on forty percent of your home. So if your home is worth a hundred thousand dollars, you're taxed on forty percent of that, or forty thousand is what we assess the miller's rate to. So when you do that, in terms of just city side, the city tax, you're paying right around a hundred and seventy-five dollars a year to the city in property tax. Um, oops. If, if this becomes the option that mayor council wanted to adopt, that will see, you see a twenty-four dollar increase to one ninety-nine. What does that mean on a monthly basis? That means your current tax will go, that current model will go up to about, by about two bucks a month, in essence. Um, if you own a house that's a hundred and fifty, you're taxed on sixty percent. If you're paying around two sixty-three, it'll go to two ninety-nine, thirty-six dollars a year. About an additional two dollars you'll make, uh, on a monthly basis, on a monthly basis. And other mark, the top end is three hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, six hundred and fourteen. It'll go to six ninety-nine, eighty-five dollars or seven dollars increase. And then we talk about the distribution of your tax costs and, and, and every, I always said this and everyone is always keen to go to the local jurisdiction, call the city or the county, depending on where you are, but this is kind of a breakdown, um, in terms of what, who gets your tax going. If you have a one dollar bill and you have to divide that one dollar bill to all the folks that tax you, who gets the lion's share? Schoolboy. And that's what Mr. Nord says. That's, that's fixed. All right, this doesn't go anywhere because in order for them to go above the twenty mils that they're operating now, takes the act of the legislature, we'd have to go to, um, Mr. Jeffries and, uh, and Mr. Ralston, ask them to adjust the schoolboy, ask them to adjust to go above the twenty mils that they're at now. Uh, and they're funding this, funding the schools to that amount. The county gets right around twenty-seven percent, I think it is somewhere in there. We get around ten to eleven percent of that dollar would go to us and then the rest of it, underpinned compared to the state, and the state is heavily decreasing and what they're, what they're getting from property tax. That's not one of the main sources of revenue for state, for state. So how do we compare to some of our neighbors around Metro area that are pretty much around the same size as us in population? Um, Forest Park, fourteen point seven, and this is just their city tax, city tax. This is not city, county, schoolboy, but this is just the city part, uh, and where we compare. Um, fourteen for Forest Park, four to three point eight. Um, there's alternative to go to three point, four point nine, we're at four point three. Uh, Griffin is at, uh, eight point six. Excuse me. Uh, Union City is at fifteen point nine. Carnes is about thirteen point eight and Carrollton is about fourteen, at four point six, which is relatively practical where we are. And they're roughly about the same size as we, about twenty-seven thousand people. And so tonight, with those two recommendations, we're back. This is where we are today. This is on the general fund side. Uh, in terms of what, what the budget is, we presented to the council, um, the twelve, to adopt the budget to twelve point four, but if the council associates that want to fund those additional public safety, uh, to move the budget to twelve point nine, uh, end up with an also code, a miller's rate adjustment to four point three eight to four point nine. And, uh, you have any questions you may have, mayor council?
Okay, councilmember, before we open the public hearing, you get out there if, uh, any question you might add relative to, uh, I, I'm assuming we're talking about, uh, it's when I left there on Thursday, we talked about option number two, is that your recommendation?
So again.
Option number two is your recommendation?
Uh, in order for us to, to accomplish the things that, that I think the mayor council wants, I think, yes, that's, you know, we have, that basically two recommendation. The initial recommendation obviously was the twelve point four and then we met and made and the council asked us to look at funding public safety. Um, we added these, the, the amount there and came up with the miller's rate to support it. Uh, and so, yes, that's our alternative recommendation to mayor council, if that's what mayor council wants to do this year.
Thank you, Fred. Now, anybody have any councilmember's questions before we open the public hearing? You're welcome. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Stewart?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mayor Hopland. Mr. City Administrator, I just wanted some, uh, clarity on the city promotions versus the Main Street budget. Main Street, uh, by expenditures and function is one eighty-four, five ninety-six and then we have city promotions at eighty-nine four. Can you tell us what city promotions are?
Um, city promotions is media, that's, um, Ms. Casey. It does all our newsletters, pictures, uh, fly events and so forth, that's Ms. Casey's.
Does that, does that include additional upgrades on? Oh, I got you. I, okay, I hear you. That's salary included?
That's salary, yes, ma'am, that's salary plus, uh, and salary plus for, 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 for.
Any other questions, Ms. Stewart? Welcome over at this time.
There probably won't have questions after.
Others that, uh, have some time, just, where do you?
I'll wait till after the public hearing.
Okay.
I haven't anything, I will.
Thank you so much, thank you, Fred.
Yes, sir.
You see, came in, it's on the clock, ladies and gentlemen, that really doesn't mean anything. Not we have a public hearing and I would hope that those that have done and, and share that thought relative to the adoption of this budget that's been promoted for us tonight. We welcome anybody, I'm not gonna touch you off, I'll assure you of that. On behalf of the council, I assure you of that, so. And if, ten, ten minutes doesn't mean, that's pretty, pretty much the plan, whether it is the plan or something. So we welcome anybody that'd like to come and comment that may have been here at any of these hearings this is the last and before we adopt a budget tonight. So we welcome anyone to the voting. If you please state your name and, uh, and come forward this time. Anyone here? Be happy to hear it from you. Mr. Collins, what's up? It's Fred Collins.
Good to see you, Fred. Fred Collins, forty, can we ask a question?
Thank you, man.
Thank you very much for holding this, uh, public hearing tonight on, on the increasing of taxes. Uh, if I could, break a little suggestion, can I reference something that came up earlier in the meeting? Uh, uh, the presentation on the Big Spring Park and the improvements there? Councilperson Natty, I am thrilled at that also. Uh, we're next door neighbors to that property and that is really, really gonna be an addition and, and improvement to that area, to the neighborhood. Plus, the functionality of pulling back that rainwater that's causing havoc in that creek down behind our, our, our neighborhood there, or some of our communities' properties. And it's even, it's getting worse every day. Hopefully, this will go a long way towards cutting that out and then the, the creek restoration. We really appreciate you approving that and getting that to the county for their several approval and, and okay, and standing up for this and we really, really appreciate that, looking forward to that, helping that bad situation a lot. And as far as the current work that's being done on Big Spring Park, the execution there for the pond, uh, our neighborhood was very nervous about disruptions to our lifestyle there with the crops and the equipment and the dust and the dirt and the mud and the rock. They're moving dirt as fast as they can, day in and day out. I went by there today, there is not a speck of dust anywhere, no mud in the street. Very, I don't know who's supervising the actual operation of that, but whoever's doing that, they're doing an excellent job. And you have my appreciation and my applause and my neighborhood. And you have my appreciation and my applause and my neighborhood, thank you all.
Thank you, Brad, for sharing outside comments at this time, because during our open session of public hearing, we welcome any comments or other to petition, eh?
Uh, I expect, as far as the, uh, the budget, uh, I am totally one hundred percent against any tax increase. Not necessarily the amount of tax increase, it's the, it's the mindset of anytime we wanna do something different, or, 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 or improve services, or add personnel, we've got to go in tax, the tax areas. And we just cannot do that every time something comes up. I mean, budgeting is not easy work, it's tough work. I've done budgets, I've done small budgets, I've done big budgets, I've done huge budgets. Sometimes the huge budgets are easier to manipulate than the, than the small budgets, but it's tough work, it is, and I, you know, I'm not, uh, belittling the amount of work that you guys have already done. Uh, Mr. Gardner has done a wonderful job with his presentations, and I think, uh, it is not a bad budget. I think the, the, the increases in fire personnel are needed, we absolutely do need those. Uh, courthouse is gonna be great, I just don't think raising taxes to pay for all that is the right thing to do. I mean, we are still in, our economy is still in a recession. It looks like it's maybe easing out a little bit now, but it's still in a recession. Uh, in my neighborhood, mostly retired people are living on pensions and they're safe. It is the same every month. That stays constant. What doesn't stay constant is cost. Food's sky high, gasoline prices are outrageous. Our water bill's gonna go up soon, we know that. Uh, electrical energy, according to our president and his energy policy, energy prices are gonna skyrocket. That's his design, that's his plan, that's his desire, it's just gonna happen. So, we are paying, citizens are paying all the taxes they need to be paying. We, we, you know, we just cannot use raising taxes as the first solution to meet our budget every time. Raising taxes is necessary sometimes, I totally understand that. But, that, raising taxes should be the last thing we look at, after we've gone through and asked all of the department heads, if we need two hundred thousand dollars for four firefighters, that's like one percent of the budget. Department heads, find one percent of your budget and cut it out. If you can't do it, I'll leave it. I mean, raising taxes is, what you've done all here is legal, I mean, if, if it passes and, you know, you had the public turn and, uh, you presented it legally and it'll be legal, but it will not be moral to, to do that to your constituents. And I beg you not to raise the millage rate tonight. Things we wanna do, let's just sort of put them on the background, up front, see how revenue goes for next year. I mean, if, if, if the climate right, home values are gonna increase, and that gives you a chance, uh, to balance out, uh, the tax, the tax digest, so we can do the things we wanna do. And I, you know, I'm a fan of public safety, I, I'm number one fan of public safety. I've got relatives that, in both fire and, 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 and police departments, not here, but in other places, so I, I'm a big fan, and I, I know that we need that, I know they stand between us and disaster a lot of times. Uh, so, but, well, the other side of that coin is, that's a great service that we're conceding, but the citizens are the ones who are gonna have to pay for that service, and we're paying just about all we can pay right now. And I, you know, I love my county, and I wanna see my county prosper, and can, continue to, 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 to attract new businesses and new people like Nissan and, and others. You do those things the right way, that grows the economy, and the revenue will come following that, so let's not raise taxes tonight. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Collins. We welcome others to the podium.
Mayor, ma'am? Mayor?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Um, Mr. Collins, um, I just wanted, for the sake of clarification, uh, the city tonight will be adopting the proposed budget, and the one that's under consideration right now, um, it calls for revenues that are, contemplate an increased millage rate. Um, but, but, the city is not adopting an increased millage rate tonight. Uh, there is, the way the laws are written, there is a conflict of sorts with the timing of it all. We have to adopt our balanced budget by a certain date, but yet the county doesn't have its tax digest certified until another date, and so it's really not possible for the city to meet all the deadlines at once. So we have to, so I just wanna reassure you in all words that we're, we're not, um, we have to, there is a theory, we have to have additional public hearings prior to any increase in the millage rate, and the city will actually have to publish a big notice in the paper. Um, there's another state statute that applies in that situation. So, beyond the lookout, whatever the decision is here tonight, my phone is terrible, uh, but there will be additional public hearings, additional public notice, when it comes time, that will probably be in July, Frederick, uh, after the digest is certified, we'll leave it, uh, when those hearings will start, with at least one week notice prior to each hearing, so.
Can I just clear that up, my argument was been the same at that point?
Sure, yeah, and obviously, but just.
Thank you so much for sharing that information. On the other, uh, anyone else? Public hearing is still open, we welcome you. Yes, ma'am? Good morning, nice to see you. Well, Ms. Jean?
Mr. Mayor and Council, I have been a citizen, and my name's Jeanne Reddian, I've been a citizen in Hacksaw here in McDonough for thirty-eight years now, so I feel like I've earned pay for this debt and taxes. But, um, what I'm concerned about is that, I, I would appreciate the fact that we would like a new city court, but I would like to remind you that we've invested a great deal in the church where we're holding court now, we put, rehabbed that building twice since we've been there, so I'm wondering about, you know, are we throwing good money after bad, or, you know, I understand parking's there, is a problem there, but there are things that you can do about that. We all want, we have, we all want everything, you know, we don't, don't always get everything we want, but I know we have empty office space in the old city hall now, why can't you move the people that are in the trailers in that old space until we can afford to build a new court? That, to me, would be one way we could certainly cut back a little bit. Um, I, I have some questions about the budget. I, I'd like to know, for, like, for instance, this year, did we stay within the budget for this fiscal year?
Ms. Reddian, we do not know, we have not had an audit, and the audit probably will, or later will, leave our figures in June, uh, for the fiscal year, will have some field in July, probably twenty-fifth of July, and then hopefully, last year we had an unusual situation, took another month to have an audit. We hope to have an audit, but this, uh, November first, so, uh...
What, what about last year? When we've been in the budget that was passed last year?
June the thirtieth, two thousand thirteen, uh, we, uh, Fred, would you share that information with, I have some figures, but I'd rather you to share that with, uh, but, June the thirtieth, two thousand thirteen, thirteen budget?
That, that budget went over, uh, and there were some key areas why the budget went over. Uh, specifically it went over just over a million dollars because of the purchase of the Lawrence Road Street property for the police department, uh, uh, that's not the police department, excuse me, for the court, associated with the court side of this. Um, when we purchased the Lawrence, when we purchased the Mercer property in oh-nine, um, to put the public safety on and then removed away from that, what in essence should have happened was, we should have transferred the, that property over to a cemetery fund, but the trust fund is a limited access fund, we were supposed to establish a new, um, cemetery fund, which we did a couple of months ago. Um, about that expense on that revenue should have been transferred over into the newly created, that didn't happen, so it actually hit the general fund. Um, but one event you'll see tonight when they amend the budget is, as we explained to mayor council, and that was a timing issue specifically as it relates to the five, when you then create the cemetery fund, the value of the new, of the Mercer property would then go from the, from the general fund into the new cemetery fund, and obviously the value that transferred back to the general fund revenue, and, and, or it'll show that, at least they put after the presentation year, you'll see.
So how much over would be that, one year, a million dollars or so?
I mean, because of that, then we had a lawsuit, um, that started back in two thousand and five or six, um, that we, seven, that we fought for the last seven, eight years and lost, um, and then they took us to court for attorney's fees, we won, and then to the lower court, then we lost, um, on, I guess on their appeal, so we had to basically pay their attorney's fees. Um, and that happened in September of this year, but because of the timing on, on, on the way accounting does, it actually hit the previous year budget, not the budget that it came out of, which is.
So that was how much money?
That was three hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars, which was unanticipated.
Close to four hundred thousand?
Yes.
So that's, so you were what, a million and a half, about a million point four over budget? One point four million over for that, so where, where did that money come from?
It came from reserve.
From reserve?
Yes.
Okay. I was supposed to do me a good to ask how much is in the reserve now?
Uh, right now, until the man, budget is amended, it's a hundred and thirty-six thousand, with the amendment of the budget, nine hundred and five of the value of the Mercer property will then go transferred back to the general fund reserve and make it right at one point.
It will be?
Just over a million dollars.
One million and four hundred, one million forty-two thousand?
Forty-two thousand.
What I believe?
So, basically from now to the?
One mil, I saw a million dollars essentially is what's in the, and how much are we supposed to have, because I believe it's supposed to be like at least a couple of months operating expenses and that fund?
Typically, the rule is, um, is you try to have three months operating.
And how much would that be?
That would be close to, what do we do, about, about three hundred to four hundred? Three hundred to four hundred, so that's, so we decide, say, four hundred a month, a thousand a month, so you're looking at just around two point something months, uh, months in reserve.
I'm sorry, it is?
But, about two, about two months.
Okay, so, so I'm asking for the figure actually, how much?
I'd like to get that to you, because I don't have it sitting in front of me, I'd like to get the numbers to you and show you exactly where they are, I don't have it. Yeah.
Okay. Anyway, my, my concern is that if, if we take on too many capital improvement projects, I can appreciate the fact that we, there are some things that we want, but, uh, I'm just afraid we can't afford it right now, and I don't want us to, I, along with my, um, neighbor down the street, my husband and I are both retired, we're on fixed incomes, we can, we appreciate more than most how difficult that is to come up with extra money for taxes. So I, I want you each to think very, very hard before you put that burden on the taxpayers of this, of the city. Because I probably, I, you know, I feel like I, I've had a pretty good life here, but, um, I own more than one property, and, and my property is more expensive than the ones that you quoted, so, so it would be an appreciable increase for me if we have to go up with taxes. So I'm just saying, I think we ought to look through the budget one more time, and maybe some of the things, maybe there's some temporary things you can do to get us to another fiscal year, and then maybe things will be better, or maybe we'll have some more money then, but those are my concerns.
Thank you. Yes, Reddian, thank you so much for sharing that information. Again, we are still in a, a period of discussion, uh, open public hearing, if anyone else likes to, uh, would like to make any comments, they please come to the podium, you're welcome here. Yes, ma'am?
Hello, uh, Mayor, Council. Um, my name's Andrea Tyler, and I was at a two thousand South Hall currently, um, just sitting here listening. I know everyone, when you hear the word tax increase, all, everyone just sees red lights flashing, a complete halt and stop, and, you know, only thirty-eight years of age, I've had my share of paying taxes as well, just like everyone else, but my issue is that I am for the increase simply because of the public works that, well, the public safety, for instance. A personal experience as far as having more firefighters is the example that you mentioned with, um, the, the grease fighter, or the person not, the firefighter's not being able to handle more. My case is one that hits home when you mention that, because in two thousand and nine, my family and I lost our home because of that same situation as far as firefighters weren't equipped, basically handled our situation, having to come from a different area, so what started off as a small intimate, I, I shouldn't say that, because there's nothing small without fire, but what started as a small house fire ended up as a devastating loss to my family and my kids for the simple fact, when fire rescue did arrive, there was nothing that they could do at the time, for the simple fact, they had to wait on backup, which took relatively a long time to get there. And I don't know, I'm sure you probably remember Castlewoman Barn, and you actually had to bring new shoes, because my kids are not outside, basically barefoot, no clothes, but shorts, and it was kind of cold at the time, so we're outside freezing and watching our house completely burn, because they weren't equipped to handle the situation, from, like I said, a small kitchen fire that, that, that basically destroyed not only my, my kid's home at the time, but the house that I grew up in, as well as the house that my grandmother who's here, the first property that she ever owned as an adult. She's also a property owner of more than one resident. But when you put a figure on what your family's safety is worth, in essence of an increase, even if an increase is thirty-six dollars a year, I think, which was one of the figures that you quoted, I think my kids' life, and I'm sure a lot of you, if you were in that same situation, would think that your family's safety is worth more to the, more than that, just a couple of dollars increase. I'm on a fixed income as well, and I, I don't wanna have to pay more taxes, but if me paying more taxes is gonna give me the safety of knowing that if something of that were to happen again, I forget that they're gonna be equipped to handle the situation, then I'm all for it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, thank you for sharing that information with us, uh, to you and your family, and of course, I certainly regret, I think, the place that I can, uh, can't conceive of that, thank you for bringing that to our attention. Uh, the others in the community that would like to speak, we, we welcome you to, welcome you to the podium. Oh, excuse me.
Sorry, Mike.
Yes, uh, go ahead.
Uh, Michael Warren.
Yes, Mr. Council.
I know it's gotta be tough for you guys, nobody wants to hear the word tax increase. Uh, I just have a question, I really haven't had much of a chance to, um, look into it, honestly, but, uh, the firefighters and police idea, I mean, it's, it's an absolute necessity, uh, we have to do it, we have to have, you know, the, the manpower to take care of public safety. Uh, what was the issue with the courthouse? I wasn't, uh, I've only been to part of the meetings, um, why is the courthouse only attended this time? Uh, I, is it, are we talking about the church over here, because it's adequate, I wasn't sure about that whole, so, uh, just a question for, for you guys who will be open, I can't answer, so, um, just wasn't a hundred percent sure on that, but I really have.
You wanna respond to, uh, the question?
Yes, sir.
Yes, please, I understand.
One, one of the things that, that you as a citizen did, when you voted for it, and the citizens as a whole did back in two thousand and six, two thousand and seven, was you voted for a sponsor, new public safety complex, the one since penalty of sales tax, um, back then, and the goal was to build a new police and fire station, because I think at that time, the community recognized that we had grown facilities that there were already here. Um, and so with that, the city purchased a property, um, back in oh-nine, however, they hadn't really moved on the project over that period of time, and you kinda got an idea what happened in oh-eight and oh-nine, oh-ten. an idea what happened in oh eight and oh nine, oh ten. Um, but when I came on board, that was one of the outstanding projects, SLOSS projects that was out there that we needed to address in terms of, you know, are we going to, because we already had an mandate to do so as part of the SLOSS and we bond financed to purchase the property, we'd said that was a priority of me and council to get to purchase that now for public safety once we bond financed upfront. Um, and so when I came on board, we looked at that and I told me and council, I don't think it'd make any sense to build police stations around it by dead people almost a mile and a half off the square. Why would you do that? Um, one of the major costs that was associated with the public safety complex was parking retention, I think right over two million dollars. Uh, and so as we were driving around with the council members when I first came on board, um, the idea came to look at a location that was closer, um, and there was an office building existing partially vacant and lying next to it that we could look at. Uh, Ben council looked at that. They said it made sense. And one of the savings in the whole deal was, um, you're familiar with the two-story parking deck that's barely utilized. And we said, you know, what a wonderful, at least the taxpayers' money to build a two-story parking deck that nobody uses, but you could build this facility and put the court and the police right across the street. That alleviated the issue of having to put in two million dollars plus for stormwater and parking because it's right across the street. Um, and then you have, obviously, there's the, um, symbiotic relationship with having, um, state court, uh, pretty much judicial and Henry County Court facilities right there. Um, and then it would be a better transition to put it right where, yes, that that would make sense. Um, so as part of that, we purchased the building, renovated the building and the police is currently in the office, two-story office building. So they moved from a, correct me if I'm wrong, Chief, a nine, nine, nine thousand square foot building to almost nineteen thousand square foot building, um, that will have them grow into the future.
Oh, I understand.
The next five component of that was to, to build a court facility. Um, and I could let Chief tell you a little bit about what's going on at the court in terms of how they're, how they're working in the current facilities there. But the other side of the equation was to build the, the court. Um, and so over the last two years, we've been looking at how do we make that happen? Um, and in that integrating time from a funding standpoint, obviously, we didn't think it was prudent to look at funding. We couldn't see where we could fit it in, um, in the current budget, how to address the concern. We, we actually rolled back the military last year and the year before last and added, how many police officers, Chief?
Two police officers and two crime scene techs left.
So four, four new officers under the existing budget without raising taxes. And so when you add them in and their calls come in, at some point you reach a tipping point and you go, how, how much more can we, can we bear to add more staff in the facilities and equipment versus being able to do that? Um, so yes, and that's where it came from. But, Chief, you want to talk a little bit about what, what's going on at the court?
Well, if, if it's the court that, over there, I, I mean, I've driven, I, I, like I said, I haven't had an opportunity to really look at it as much as I should have.
Yep.
So, uh, I'm sure that there's differences in court systems over here off the square or up there off the square. They probably have a different court system. I don't know if that's Canley, all Canley City. So that's partly my clarification is to, you know, what's the differences there. So you're talking about.
I'm, I'm, I'm part of that. It's also the beginning cost. Um, yes.
Um, I don't really want to interrupt you, but I think it would be crucial for other people sitting in the audience, if they could hear Police Chief, uh, explain the conditions at the courthouse. Because, I mean, we have spent forty thousand dollars for the last nine years, three hundred and sixty thousand dollars that we have absolutely nothing to show for. Uh, but anyway, beyond that, there's greater concerns and issues. So would you please? And this started, by the way, uh, under Mayor Craig, when we actually did do something with the existing, where it is now. And there were plans to build a building adjacent to that to, uh, get them out of trailers and to get them out of deteriorating homes that were on the site at the time, that were not, uh, possible to continue to be used. And then the, the council moved forward to address the issue as a whole. And then that came with the SLOSS three, uh, which was the purchase of a new site. And so that's how we got to where we are today. So, uh, would you please address the conditions uh, that we are now dealing with?
Sure. Part of the issues, we'll, we'll first take, uh, the office environment of the staff. And as you said, we're currently leasing, uh, some trailers that we've had for eight or nine years and we pay about forty thousand dollars a year for those three trailers. Those trailers over the years have, have become, uh, not the current existing conditions for our staff. The restrooms are not adequate. As we know, inside, part of the ceilings are falling down. The exterior, the, uh, the skirting on the trailer is off. We constantly have air conditioning restroom issue down there. Uh, the staff, and, and if you've ever been to court, you see our, our court staff, they bring these big, huge metal file cabinets that are on rollers and, and they're so heavy now that the ladies can't push them across to the court. We have to get some, uh, community service workers to help us escort those, uh, carts over to the, the court. The other part that we run into in our courts, uh, they, any Wednesday you can come on arraignment day, there's not adequate seating in our court. We have people standing in the aisles, standing in the front. Uh, we have people out in the hallway because there's not adequate seating for the amount of people that we put in there on an arraignment day. Security is our top, top priority as we, over the past year for tens of incidents in courthouses and courtrooms, uh, we cannot provide adequate, adequate security for our staff in the current conditions that we are in, uh, now. And as Ms. Riffey's supposed, we have spent some money on that court when it was revitalized two years ago. And we spent about fifty or sixty thousand dollars to, uh, upgrade the stairs, but we had to. The stairs were falling off the building. We didn't have a choice but to upgrade those stairs. And if the mayor and council approve the option with the military, uh, increase and we build a court, we're not going to do away with the old court building. I mean, I'm sure that the mayor and council has some plans for that building down the road. So we won't be, you know, just putting money into a building that the citizens, and we save about one to point four, one point five million dollars on surface parking where we have to go in, uh, pave a big huge parking lot and add additional lighting and, and things like that. So moving down here, we're able to save a large amount of money by moving the court and police to the facility law. So those are just some of the issues that we face on a day-to-day basis with our court staff and the individuals that we have on our court building. And, uh, so if there's any more questions, I'd be glad to have.
You also have the issue that when, uh, those are at court and being arraigned, there's not adequate space for them to meet with their council. Uh, it's not adequate, it's not a safe environment overall for even the citizens who are there, let alone the court staff itself. And so it, it's, uh, a very difficult situation and I would please encourage any of the public to go down to, uh, a Wednesday when they're having the arraignment and what the situation is and watch what the staff goes through, not only the staff, but also if you are someone who is being arraigned and you want your attorney there, there is no place for that. Um, it's very difficult to deal with officers. They do not have holding places to deal with, um, with different people that are brought before the court. So, I mean, the whole situation is very, very difficult. So please go down there and take a look at it. And this is, like I said, this is multiple, multiple years of recognizing that we were growing, that we were growing with, uh, a problem that we were going to have to solve down the road. So, um, we've more or less run out of road at this point. And Ms. Riffey, I, I appreciate you saying utilizing the old city hall area, but that's not sufficient under any circumstances for as large as the court has now grown. So, um, you know, we can rent like we did. I believe we were renting when you were a member of council before we did the, uh, church situation, which is now where the parking lot is. That building sits gone. So we've just gone from being an infant, you know, to an adult and growing daily with our needs. So we really have to, uh, figure out a way to do this. And one thing that our council pointed out very clearly, that whatever we do tonight, whichever budget we take, we are not raising taxes tonight. When the, when the taxes for the ca, when our property taxes come in and we have a report from the county, we may very well be in a position not to find it necessary at all to raise the taxes. And I do know, um, and I do want Mr. Collins to know that, uh, we have gone back, uh, and the departments have gone back many times and have made very severe cuts. In fact, I even asked, if you were here on Thursday, uh, to please take a look at public works to ensure that they had necessary funding where they were concerned. So, um, I just, I want everybody to really, um, understand, you know, what we are truly facing here. And it is safety from a safety standpoint, um, as well as the fact that we've, um, run out of, uh, time.
I, I appreciate the clarity on courthouse because I wasn't sure. Even then, I see them standing out on the city square, probably not the best of circumstances either. So I just wanted to hear directly from the sources what, what I thought was the case. Uh, and just again, one more question. Uh, I'm all in favor of the firefighters and the police. As a matter of fact, one of the things that should be addressed with them is I think they're the lowest paid entry level police in the county.
And higher.
And, you know, I, I don't know all those, but just, but, uh, the question involving the courthouse, you know, it, it definitely needs improvement. It's in that check. Now, is that something that you can draw from a SLOSS?
It was not included. The building itself was not included in this present SLOSS.
Okay, so is that, is SLOSS over? Is, that's been decided, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I, I was just curious why, maybe that didn't make it SLOSS instead of, you know, something else.
If the need's been there that long, it should have been included in SLOSS. Um, the, as our, my, uh, the council members here can, um, address that independently, but basically most of the, uh, SLOSS money was put towards the maintenance of streets because so much funding has been cut by the federal government and the state government there, and so many ways in which we have to maintain our streets. So a tremendous amount, over ten million dollars, was, uh, put into SLOSS for the purpose of, uh, maintaining our streets.
Okay.
Okay. All right.
You think that might?
That's it, thank you.
Thank you so much. Ladies and gentlemen, it's only four minutes after eight. We welcome others to come to the podium before I close this public hearing. All right, folks, thank you for your input, uh, since the DM on us. And, uh, uh, I'll turn it over to Fred and then we'll call for the, uh, vote on the council. So are you anything to say relative to the, uh?
Yes, sir.
I believe.
Yeah, I know there's been some questions about where we are, um, as of May thirty-first. Uh, just looking at where we are in terms of our budget, uh, I want to bring everybody's attention. This is our year-to-date actual revenues and this is our actual year-to-date expenditures. And that is the balance.
Could you bring us figures out because they're hard to see.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Riffey. I'm sorry. Can you see that?
So that's what, ten million?
That's our year-to-date expenditures.
Ten point, ten point three eight six.
And that's our year-to-date revenue as of May thirty-first.
Frank, why don't you bring them? It is off the mark today.
Uh, uh, it's, it's year-to-date, year-to-date revenues is like the eleven hundred and six hundred and seventy-four thousand nine hundred and sixteen dollars and one cents. Year-to-date expenditures is ten million, three hundred and eighty-six thousand, six hundred and nine dollars and thirteen cents for an overage of one million, two hundred and eighty-eight thousand, three hundred and six dollars and eighty-eight cents.
This, this was, uh?
May thirty-first. Uh, when we talk about what we, what we have left in the budget in terms of our balances, and this is one thing that I've done since the beginning every year, is I've asked the bottom heads to obviously slow down spending because as you get away from tax season, revenues tend to grindle down, um, because our multi-party revenue coming from, from tax, property tax between November and January, February, and at that point, once you go beyond that, we slow down. Um, but in terms of remaining, what's remaining in their budgets, right around one point seven million. Um, and what we anticipated is our revenue, the balance is five hundred and four, five hundred and forty-six thousand. So in essence, uh, we're ninety-one percent through the budget at this point. Uh, we do have one or two departments and as we learn, as we go, but for most part, uh, we're at eighty-five percent expenditures.
Okay. You have comments, folks? Okay, we have council, we have given off the energy with, uh, some kind of motion from, uh, anyone relative to this, uh?
Mayor, I'd like to make a comment.
Yes, I'm sorry.
I support the, uh, hiring of police and fire, but I'm not for building that court building. I, I don't think it's the time to raise taxes and I don't think it's, uh, the time to put a long, a burden on us of a long-term commitment. Uh, we don't know what it's going to be like a year from now. And, uh, I know that we have a lot of retirees that live in this city now on permanent salary and I don't think they can afford to have their taxes raised. And so we, we can look at our line items and probably, you know, cut them enough to hire the firemen and one policeman. Because I know in our budget, there's some overage that could be taken out.
Thank you so much. Uh, the other thing, uh, before we call for motion and second, we need to move on.
Yes, sir. Well, thanks, ma'am. Uh, myself have been serving on the city council for about twenty-four years. And I too, you know, don't want to raise tax or bill or whatever. When it comes to a time that, you know, everything, I got a real sign that says everything don't remain the same. And, and I know we go up, we go to the gas station, we go to the grocery store. We want the price to be the same, but, but it just won't be the same. You know, I'm on, uh, yes, I'm too, on a fixed income, but I still, you know, go to the store and I still, you know, buy my gas or whatever. Uh, just last week, I went back to the courts. Now, I visit the court very regularly. And I sit in that chamber, the court, the house, uh, it's just full. But I look at parking, it, it's just trying to pull out on Megan Street, you have wrecks. I've seen wrecks have right there. And I would love to have a, our new court facility. Ms. Riffey, you, you said on the city council some time ago too, and, you know, I had those up to you and you know, just what I'm talking about also. You probably have visited court facilities also. And we know that this comes a change that we must, uh, you know, help our citizens at the same time. We must help our court, the same department, make sure they have a citizen work, working. Yes, the other, other last wish, I was there and safety, safety is, is number one. I was there and you couldn't even get through the hallway for the, uh, defenders and the, uh, officers to, to really do what they have to do. And so I have that in support of the change.
You want to have?
I have, I have a question for you, sir. I know at our, uh, special call meeting, we had a conversation regarding an option three. Um, you had recommended that there be a five-hundred-thousand-dollar cut. And I'm wondering if between our special call meeting and today, have you been able to identify any areas of, of potential cut?
No, I, I had written all of you a week before the meeting Thursday night, uh, got seven days to look at it. And I didn't identify anything. I had four, five, six options that we had. No, ma'am, in response to that, uh, I don't have anything.
Yeah, I'm, my reason for asking is that we're, we're being asked to not adopt option one or option two unless we take some action relative to cutting the budget by additional funding. And what staff is saying is that they have gone through an exhaustive process of having the department heads to evaluate their budgets. The first round was turned down and we were asked to come back with additional figures. So if we're going to, uh, look at another option and you're requesting that we, we look at the option of removing five hundred thousand, I'm just trying to identify where that comes from.
I don't, I don't have an option. I'm looking at option number two. I'm looking at option number two, consideration. I think that's the recommendation of our city manager, option number two.
And option number two, to add the police and fire and to increase the mileage rate. And so, I'm, I'm, so you are in support?
No, I didn't say, I was just going. I said, that's his recommendation.
Well, we actually have two options. We've got option one and option two.
That's the decision that you people got inside.
Well, ma'am, we are all in the same body and we all vote, so it's all of our decisions collectively.
As I understand it, Mr. Gordon, his recommendation and it is his recommendation to give to the council what is his option and what is his recommendation. I'm waiting to hear and I understood it was option number two.
We have two, we have two options before us. Option one?
I can read this. Go ahead, Mr. Gordon. Yes, ma'am, I have it.
I mean, Fred, you guys talked about this. I mean, and for the way we just held the public hearing was on option number two.
That's right.
Um, I mean, that, you know, the law of what, it contemplates that we'll have a final proposed budget, that we're going to have a public hearing on and that's what the, you know, folks will have an opportunity to give comment on. And that's what folks in here have been commenting on, whether or not we're going to increase the mileage rate. You know, at some point, having two options on the table, I think, um, is really a matter of semantics because if you don't vote in favor of option two, then what are, you know, I mean...
Good, well, let me ask that question. If we don't vote in favor to, of option two, does it automatically?
No, you, somebody can bring another motion to, you know, to vote in favor of the other option on the table. But I guess, I suppose what I'm saying is that we write down the final, we have to have a final proposed budget. We have to have something, uh, the way the law is written, which maybe as it may be, we have to have a final proposed budget, you know, final plan, that's the way the law is written, that you all can take under consideration and take and make a motion on, take under advisement and, and vote on. And that's, and that's a public, a whole public hearing on and the public can review, consider and, and offer comment on. So, that's what we've been doing, I thought, this time, period. And if, if that's not what we've been doing, I, I think that's what we've been doing. I think we can, um...
May I, may I add? Yeah, and I, if I can, yes, ma'am, as soon as, if I, if I can respond to it again. Because what we're being asked by several citizens is that we not adopt option two. That there is an action that we take that does not include an increase in the mileage rate and it does not includes an increase in the budget, but at the same time, we have the, the four firemen and the one police officer. So, what I'm trying to get after is what is the, what is the proposed plan?
The proposed plan is option two. That's the final proposed budget on the table. But I, but I can answer your question. So, here's, here's the way it will play out. Um, proposed number two on the table is a budget that, um, is based on anticipated revenues. All the budgets are based on anticipated revenues. Part of the antici- anticipated, excuse me, revenues that are included in option number two, if you will, the final proposed budget on the table, are coming from a proposed increase in the mileage rate that hasn't taken place yet. But if you stop thinking about it, all of the revenues we're discussing are, you know, anticipated or theoretical. None of them have occurred yet, including the proposed increase in the mileage rate. So, uh, step back for a moment and what happens? If you adopt option number two, the final proposed budget that's on the table and, um, that includes revenues from a contemplated, uh, proposed, uh, uh, increase in mileage rate, well, one of two things will happen. Uh, as Councilmember Noddy was pointing out, I believe, a few moments ago, you get the, the digest act from the county when it comes in sometime in July and the digest is more than what you anticipated. It turns out, you're going to be able to hit that balanced budget number without the increase in the mileage rate. That's one thing that could happen. The next thing that could happen is, uh, and I think this is more likely the scenario, that you wouldn't have to have an increase in the mileage rate in order to be able to meet that balanced budget number that you adopted in order to meet the state timeline. And so, we start to have the required hearings to be able to adopt the increased mileage rate. Um, but after a series of three public hearings and additional comments from the public, same arguments that we will hear, obviously, uh, you all decide that no, we don't want an increase in the mileage rate of four point nine nine percent because we don't want to fund the court facility. We only want to fund the two, the personnel positions. We think a, and Fredrick and Willie get together and they bring you a different percentage that will do just that. Well, then you adopt an amendment to your budget that will bring the budget number in line with that and you adopt a mileage rate increase that won't do what is required. But, but that's the process and procedures that you would need to follow.
I, I have a question on option two. State law requires we have a balanced budget, right?
Correct.
So, if we go hire four additional firefighters, one additional police officer to build the court, how do we know the mileage won't be five point five or six point oh just to get a balanced budget?
Well, I think that you wouldn't do any of those things until you have a decision on what your mileage rate is going to be. Meaning, you're going to have a decision on that.
But if you vote for option two, you've already said we're going to have a hearing to adopt the mileage. So, we're really not...
Well, you're not, to make a final decision on what your mileage rate is going to be. You, there may be a different decision, I suppose, is what I'm suggesting.
You could, uh, you can honestly adopt, uh, when we get our taxes back. We can honestly decide that no, we don't want a mileage increase. No, we are not going to fund the, um, the courthouse. No, we're not going to add the firefighters. We can do that because we will have a final number from the county to have a real basis to have a, you know, it's like, okay, this is the house I'm building. This is the final loan. This is what I'm going to have to live within. And if it ends up being that certain things have to be cut and you don't want to raise that loan, then that's what we do. We have to step back and make the cuts. And perhaps then the mayor or other council members or our staff or even you, uh, Mr. Pruitt, will find where we can get a real cost savings that will change the bottom line.
Okay, anyone, yes, will we call for a vote?
Mayor, I, I have, I have a couple of comments. And I'm, I just want to do some summarizing.
Absolutely, absolutely, this is your time.
Okay. All right, even though option two is an option that's before us at, at twelve point nine million dollars, option two also includes an increase of five hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars because that is necessary in order to fund the group insurance, overtime, software updates, supplies, et cetera, et cetera. Now, the other point that I want to bring to your attention is, is this. This year and during last year, in our retreat, there were certain focus areas that we as a council identified and voted upon. We gave our city administrator and staff directives on accomplishing certain things. Now, we refer to that process when we're dealing with the state as being unfunded mandates. We gave them the directive, but we had not identified a budget allocation in terms of how we were going to accomplish these items. That was, uh, a vote on, on, on these items, which we can find on page three, from all of us who are sitting on this body. What staff has done this year, during this fiscal year, is they have gone back and they've put a dollar value associated with what those focus areas are. That's partly the reason why we see an increase in what is being requested. The other thing that I want to bring to our attention is the fact that sixty-eight percent of our overall general fund expenditure is for personnel. It's for staff. So, if we're talking about cutting the proposed budget, you, you, if, if sixty-eight percent of your money is going towards staff, then that, that really leaves very little, um, opportunity in a, other areas to cut. So, if we're saying we need additional fire and we need additional police, then what we're talking about is cutting of approximately eleven positions at an average of forty-five thousand dollars in, including fringe. And from what I'm hearing for, for staff, is that all of the positions that we have are essential positions. So, it's, it's, it's one thing to talk about, and this is really what's gotten us in trouble, is to talk about we don't want to increase taxes because I'm a taxpayer as well. I'm a citizen first. It's one thing to talk about not wanting to increase taxes and allowing the politics of the hard decision to put us in the place that we are now because there have been several years where we have not looked at the cost of service delivery. And we have taken the role that we should not have taken by saying from either a political or emotional level that we don't want to increase taxes, so we have not increased the mileage rate. Now, where this places us today is part of our body is saying, we don't want to increase taxes. We don't support increased taxes. But I'm asking, parallel to that comment, this very specific and clear question of if we don't choose option two and a five hundred thousand dollar cut is being proposed, where does that come from? What is not fair is for some members of this body to make the hard decision that we're going to have to make relative to service delivery and others just say, oh, I don't support tax increase. Because if you poll all of us, all of us will say we don't want to increase taxes because I'm a mother of four with two college kids and I've got problems as well. So, but what we have to look at is how do we maintain the current level of service and how do we improve the level of service that is being requested of us in terms of public safety? That is a hard decision. That is a morally responsible decision. And that is really the question that is before us on this evening. So, if someone has an option other than two where you can show me and I can take a vote, a poll, what have you, on how we cannot increase taxes in order to make sure that we have proper service delivery to our citizens, then I'm open to, to, to hearing that. But if it's not going to be presented, then it's not fair to say to the public, oh, I don't support this, unless you have an option in its place.
Anybody else?
Mayor, please. Uh, option number one, I want everybody to take a very hard look at that. We can do nothing about the cost of insurance going up at this point. That increases there. The overtime was put in there because of what we experienced with the winter that we had and not necessarily having sufficient funds. It does not mean that this year, we will experience that and necessarily need that additional overtime. But we do not, as a community, delivering the proper level of safety and services, need to overlook that. That's why that is there. The software, we have purchased programs that have sat with us for years that have not been properly utilized, even after we purchased it. And all of us understand that this day and time, you must bring us and keep us up today as a city just to be able to deliver information properly and to run the city properly in those same categories. And increase in supplies for the police and fire, the, this has to do with ammunition uh, being absolutely redone. Vests that have to be repurchased after they have expired and expiration dates are there. Those have to be there. And that is over half a million dollars. That along with, uh, trying to deliver a true level of safety to the city and continuing not to overlook the fact that we have a real deficit in our safety. In fact, if you want to look at our police department, we are half of what Forest Park has for the same number of residents. Half of the police staff. Uh, just a moment. So, we're... So, the polit-, uh, the court itself is an intricate part of making the entire public safety system work properly and safely. If you ever go to that court, should someone walk in there with a gun that they're not supposed to have and not supposed to get in there with, everybody in there would be total face-to-face danger. And we could do nothing about it.
Any other questions?
I have one.
Let's see, who we want to call for?
It's got to be real.
When was the, um, last time, how long have our mileage rate been at, um, one year to four to eight seconds?
I think last Thursday, you showed it.
Yes, it, it's been, I believe, for the last two years. As a matter of fact, you increased back in oh-ten, I need to add. Then, um, some onto public safety, recognizing that there was a problem. Um, and you moved it to, uh, four point three nine. And over the past two years, we've rolled that back to four point three and continue to fund, uh, additional police officers in a period of time. So, no, we haven't increased the taxes to do, to add some of the personnel, recognizing that, you know, we still needed, we still needed new police officers. We needed our crime scene. Uh, we've addressed public, we've, from a public safety standpoint, we've addressed the police department. I think the last two budget cycles, chief. Uh, and so, we look back at how we could address the, the fire department, um, recognizing that they started out at a bigger deficit than the police department. Um, because we added four, when I came here, it was positioned for four battalion police or battalion...
Three, three retired chiefs.
And I told chief, I don't know what that make any sense, add more chiefs and he ain't got no Indians. So, what, basically, what we did was add more firefighters to, 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 to have that capacity. But even adding those folks, we still aren't where we needed to be from a fire standpoint. Uh, and so, how do we do that? Because at the end, I mean, the citizens are looking for us to provide that service. And, you know, as we look at this budget, as I explained to you guys, the last two budgets, you're going, take, take the budget out of, out of the picture. At some point, you're going to have to have a high conversation about the, the growth and development of the city and what level of service you want to provide. Not only the old citizens and new citizens, but the ones that you know are going to make it done home in the next five and ten years. And how do you do that? And that has to be an honest conversation. Okay, because now I explained to you guys, we all went for a ride. Most of us in January went for a ride on a bus. The reason why I did that is because I wanted everybody to see the community at the same time and see what's out there. And the reason we did that, as soon as we said to you guys, don't zone a piece of property for the next ten years and your population will still talk forty thousand, just by what you've already put on the ground. That's a reality. Will they come? I don't know. I just drove over in Avalon and there are twelve brand-new houses being built. That's just Avalon. Is that going to continue? Probably yes. So, how do we continue, recognizing that that growth is coming, even at three percent? Go by. We ran from a hundred and sixty percent from twenty, from two thousand to two thousand ten, one hundred and sixty percent. Eighty-eight hundred people to twenty-two. Since this is an undercount, not an accurate count. So, taking that into reality and they say, hey, twenty-twelve, you're at two, twenty-two thousand five ninety-nine. The reality is we're probably closer to twenty-two. And move. So, that's the conversation. And whether it be this shift, um, the reason why we, you know, this was an option this year because one, uh, insurance folks said that the, 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 the guy suddenly would have to go through the bond finances. The interest rates are very low at this time. Construction costs, as you know, will continue to pick up as the economy picks up. That's doing it hot. So, if you build it two years from now, you're adding costs on to it. You build it five years from now, you're adding costs on to it just because. Um, so, when we should have lit that much two years ago, we'd probably could have did it for a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand dollars cheaper or more. We didn't. But now, we're hoping that this is the time... We didn't, but now we're hoping that this is the time to strengthen my ability to do that. But if not, it's the rich man council. I mean, at some point, these realities can still come to you, you still gotta make a decision, whether you kick it here on this year or next year.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, this time, plus, I mean, yes, ma'am.
I, I had two questions.
Yes, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Just so I'm clear on something.
Oh, no, you're welcome.
Fred, just so I'm clear, option one and two, they both covered the increase in overtime group insurance, those options.
Yes, but everything, everything, as you see on the, on the Russian one, it's embedded in options.
I should make sure we all understood that.
Yes.
And then, secondly, if we go to option one at the twelve-point-four, and the index comes back, we then have the opportunity to amend the budget and add departments and is that, is that, is that fair to say or correct to say?
The reverse is equally true.
Right.
What you just said is exactly right.
Yeah, I knew, I knew we talked about the reverse side of that earlier.
Right, right, right. Both scenario, the scenario works in both directions.
So, option one is still on the table?
I mean, you know, and, and so, the budget is just a number, right? So you have, we have a fine proposed budget in order to meet the requirements of law. You guys don't like that bottom-line number? Both are different numbers?
I know.
Oh, and, 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 uh...
So I just wondered, and instead of talking about options one and two, just let's put, you know...
What is the final number? Is it, is it twelve-point-nine-eight or twelve-point-four?
Just put a number on it.
Let me remind you this too, you have to hit me in the, in the box just to remind you. When we, when we did the twelve-point-four analysis and we looked at the property, I think we remember giving you all this in the presentation, we did take into account that the, the, a certain values would be assessed a little higher. And what we did was to be prudent, you know, they were saying eighteen to sixteen percent, and I think we did ten percent, just because, you know, there're gonna be appeals. People are gonna appeal their values, and some folks will win. Um, so we did it at that, so that, that ten, that ten percent increase in the digest is embedded in the twelve-point-four.
But it could be fifteen percent.
But it could be fifteen percent, and fifteen percent.
It could be eight percent as well.
Correct. And I know, I know, Mr., uh, Mr. Pruitt mentioned that, that, you know, if, if, if we don't do it now, we can't, uh, do it in the future. The reason why we look at that is because you want, this cost is gonna go with you. It, it's like the cost we added last year, we added the CSI offices, you know, we put that in that year's budget, but remember what I told you last year, that you know what, once you add it, it's gonna move forward down the road. So the only consistent revenue stream you have is your, is your property tax. You just, that's why you don't want to cut your way into it, because at some point, you're gonna have to add something back into that budget down the road that should continue to grow, and then you're gonna be coming back. Uh, so, in essence, you know, we, we try to find a consistent revenue stream, and that's one of them. But I tell you, I mean, realize, um, as we go through this process, yes, this is, this is a wonderful guest, and, and every community goes through this process, because you don't know what it's gonna be, but you, you use your best educated guess and information that you have. Uh, and the last couple of years, even though we were, we, we were growing slowly, you know, we were able to roll back, and remember having the conversation with the mayor, that, yeah, we'll be able to roll back and still be able to do some things, and we did. We added those additional police officers for, for the public, for, for the police department. But at the same time, when we came into this budget, and like I said, you know, we cut the warrants, but part of cutting that warrant was also cutting the needs. We did that last year when Chief Ox was supplies, and I said, chief, we gotta save it off. And she said, okay. I said, you know, I tried to look at everything that ranking it says, you know, this is need one, two, three, four, reading none of that as a warrant. But at the same time, as I'm funding need one, two, three, and we get down, I ask the question, can you do this, this year? Can you do without it? And if they say yes, it's gone. But I know the next year, that what was a four, it'll probably be a three or a two, maybe even a one next year. Uh, and so, they'll bring it back, um, to me next year and say, Mr. Gardner, I know you cut this last year, but I really, this, this is a need now, I, I gotta have this. I gotta have new gas. I gotta have bad, I don't do that shit. Um, we did the thing that you were borrowing from the fire department in Henry County, you, the, the fill, the fill our tanks. We steered out off a year, and then we finally had to bite the bullet and had to do it. Uh, but there are times when I, when I talk to these guys and say, guys, give me what your best, deal this, and then we go through that scenario. Um, can we cut things out of the budget? Yeah, but they'll, they'll have an impact on the way we do business. Uh, and that's why they're out there.
Ladies and gentlemen, any other questions? Skyler, move forward, eight-thirty-five, entertain a motion relative to, uh, adoption of, uh, a proposed budget at this time. entertain a motion. And we're only talking about budget two thousand and fifteen. I've not ever seen a budget amendment for two thousand and fourteen. Budget approved fiscal year two thousand and two. entertain a motion. Any member of this fine...
I don't, I don't understand what you're saying, it's, uh, maybe I'm just on the...
I'm waiting on a motion for, if you have a whole budget for two thousand and fifteen, very, very something. Very something, maybe. entertain a motion. Then we'll have discussion if you want to.
He's talking about number fifteen.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor?
Yes?
I offer a motion for the adoption of option two fiscal year fifteen budget at twelve-thousand-nine-hundred-eighty-five-thousand... I'm sorry, twelve million, nine-hundred-eighty-five-thousand dol...
Yeah, one.
Okay. Ooh, my gosh.
That's all right, go ahead.
Okay, I, I move, I move to adopt option two, which includes the addition of four additional firefighters and one police officer.
All right, sir. And we have a, now, we're getting around to the geniuses of why we're here. I'm gonna give everyone of you an opportunity for any questions. You've got a good motion on the floor, and you've got a file on the side. Anybody have any questions? This is your opportunity to be heard, right this time.
Does that include the, uh, fourth bill?
Yeah, oh, she did mention, I think, the...
Option two.
Yes. Anybody else have?
Mr. Gardner.
Yes, Mr. Gardner. Mr. Mayor, I just, Genesis reminded, um, that number is, needs to be twelve, if it's option number two, it's twelve million, nine-hundred-eighty-five-thousand, two-hundred-seventy-two, not six-hundred-and-fifty-three. I'm sorry. Please type through that last two digits for me.
Two-hundred and one.
Seventy, two-hundred-and-seventy-two.
The last three digits, two-seventy-two.
Thank you, ma'am, thank you. Thank you, thank you, ma'am. You know what, now? Lay it in the table. Anybody have any comments, any questions? Two thousand and fifteen proposed budget. I really appreciate, uh, going to bring our attention to the mayor report. That's unrest, we've got June coming up, we probably know something in July. Plan to scrutinize July, which is at the year-end, and any adjustments, which is always crucial, just down the road. Tonight, regretfully, knowing the council, I cannot support the motion for all the second. As I stated in our last, uh, call meeting on Thursday, I have concerns relative to the current fiscal uncertainty in connection with the Trump and six-thirty-two thousand-and-thirteen audit report that we received some three weeks ago. A need to vote on this issue, which does not include a fund balance reserve, but which includes far in four billion, seven-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars, million dollars for this municipal quarter over twenty-year period, and a proposed fourteen percent tax increase, respectfully, ladies and gentlemen, in my opinion, is financially disconcerting. Ms. Price, would you please read, read the motion and the second, and give us opportunity to vote?
The motion is to approve the adoption of option number two for the fiscal year two thousand and fifteen budget in the amount of twelve million, nine-hundred-eighty-five-thousand, two-hundred-seventy-two dollars to include four fault, four firefighters, one police officer, and a municipal quarter.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, you please cast your vote at this time. And?
Leave your light on, because I, I've got to record all the, the names, just a moment, ladies and gentlemen. There are four in favor, and there are three in opposition.
Well, ladies and gentlemen, this motion passed, and, uh, ladies and gentlemen, we'll be faced with a twelve billion, nine-eighty-five, I think, two-seventy-two budget for the year two thousand and fifteen. Appreciate all the interest among our council members and decisions they made at this time, which will carry us down to item number fifteen, and I'll call on Ms. Grant for presentation and adoption, uh, consider adoption of the question, but Ms., Ms. Grant, welcome.
I'm trying to make this quick.
Good for you, ma'am.
During the last audit, uh, when we were preparing the final budget, when we had the working on the budget, it wasn't, it was a really, definitely, we were about at that time.
We can't hear.
One of the directors was to come back before, uh, the closing of the year to bring any amendments to the budget back at that time, and that's what we've done, wait, thank you.
Take your chief.
Okay, so, uh, this year, the overall budget has not increased, except for the nine-hundred-and, uh, nine-hundred-five-thousand, seven-hundred-seventy-seven dollars here. Uh, that is for the sale of the cemetery. And so, we went from, we're recommending a budget that's going from twelve million, two-hundred-twenty-one thousand to two-ninety, two-hundred, two-hundred-ninety-one thousand to thirteen million, one-twenty-seven, oh, sixty, I'm sorry, thirteen million, one-hundred-twenty-seven-thousand, sixty-eight dollars. That's an increase of nine-hundred-five-thousand, seventy-seven dollars. Overall expenditures stayed the same, with the exception of the nine-hundred and five-thousand that we transferred into the fund balance, so you would have a balanced budget. There have been changes within the departments, which is basically for increase in insurance, increases in utilities, uh, reallocating salaries from part-time to contract labor, uh, and we had, again, uh, we had increased insurance and fuel costs. So those are some of your adjustments. Uh, if you look at this column here, adjustments, you can see what we made, the changes, and again, we balance out the budgets, your only difference is the nine-hundred-five, which is for revenue, increased revenues as well as expenditures, so you have a zero balance, so you have a balanced budget here.
Anybody have any questions?
There's one, I think I have one last thing.
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. Go ahead.
Oh, it's okay. Here on the sheet, I won't have to make this any larger, but we're start, what I'm showing you here is that the fund balance at twenty thirteen was a hundred-and-thirty-six thousand. Once you add the nine-hundred and five-thousand, seventy-seven, seven-hundred-seventy-seven dollars to the fund balance, your fund balance will increase to one million, forty-two-thousand, seven-hundred-and-eighteen dollars.
Anybody have any questions?
You, you did say this is a two-thirteen budget?
No, this is a two-fourteen.
But it's two-fourteen.
Twenty-fourteen, uh, by twenty-six-thirty, twenty-fourteen. This is not to say that this is going to be final, because as you know, there's always adjustments that will be made.
Is this, uh, is this cash money, or is this property value that you moved?
No, we're moving assets. Fund balance is not, fund balance is not, I'm sorry, fund balance is not a cash balance. Fund balance includes your assets.
So you're talking about property and that?
Property and cash. It's accumulation over the years, so fund balance is never cash balance. It's closely reserved, but it resembles cash balance, but it's not cash balance.
So it's not spendable unless you sell the property?
That's not entirely true. If you have money in the bank, you still have, uh, cash that you can use for operations.
I guess, uh, he's lost me there.
Cash back, your fund balance is made, made up of income that you've earned over the years. If this year I have a hundred dollars in net profit, using for profit organization, in this case, a hundred dollars for nonprofit organization, I have excess of a hundred dollars over my revenues, revenues over expenditures. Next year, I have a hundred dollars excess revenues over expenditures. That may include notes, it may include cash that I've taken in, it includes a variety of things, cash and non-cash items. So your cash balance is not your fund balance, they're two different things.
Thank you, good questions. Any, any other comments, probably? Ladies, gentlemen, anyone?
Mayor, I, I think it's important, and I'm sorry that the media has left, but I think it's important that, uh, folks understand that it is this accounting issue that has resulted in the budget appearing to be a million dollars overdrawn. So now that this is taking place, then that actually addresses the issue of fund balance, and our fund balance historically in McDonough has never been all cash. So I think that that is important for the public to understand, because when we're saying things, it sounds like everything that's happening is new, and it's an anomaly, and it's something different, and there's no reason for it, and that's not fair. I keep saying that. The, the eleven-hour, the eleven-month audit was because there were situations in this audit which were different, because there were federal issues which were involved relative to money that we had received in the city of McDonough that historically was not a part of our auditing process. We just have to tell the whole story, because otherwise, people end up looking bad, and, and that should not be our intent.
Anyone else have a question?
Lady, do you have any additional comments?
Thank you so much, thank you so much. Here, again, uh, has the element of a budget amendment, and she is requesting that we adopt relative to two thousand and fourteen. And you'd like to make up your own line of research, whatever's been said, which I assume all true. And, uh, so, at this point in time, since it's getting late, I will call on you, good thing for home or time, entertain a motion relative to, uh, this recommendation. Anyone?
Um, Mayor Council, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the budget amendment for, um, two and fourteen.
All right, thank you so much. Do you have a second? Folks, members of the council, we have a motion, need a second? entertain a amendment two thousand and fourteen.
We have to do it, don't we?
Well, we can.
All right, well, second.
All right, we have a motion, thank you, Kev, thank you so much. Thank you so much. We've got a motion and second. Now, you, members of the council, I've got two questions. Anybody have any question? I certainly don't have any, and, uh, but I, um, I, I continue to be troubled by, by transfer out in, uh, uh, one of those lines, but, uh, that, that's okay, at the eleventh hour, so to speak, but, uh, everything that Ms. Grant has said is true, and I think it's a decision that you don't have to make, whether you want to amend the two thousand and fourteen budget at the year-end, which is fine. So at this time, I'll call for the, those that support this motion, who vote, vote against it. You vote them out, and cast your vote. And Ms. Price?
Um, there are five yeses and two noes.
Okay, it's okay.
Noes and caries.
It's okay. Thank you so much, thank you, Ms. Grant. Let's put down unscheduled comments. Chief? Uh, Mayor, uh, Ms. Rippey was scheduled, and I'm not sure.
I still have a few more.
Okay, ma'am. Okay, Ms. Grant, I, I, I couldn't see whether you would laugh.
No, I'm still here, sir, I'm listening to the...
All right, we, we're delighted you're here.
I, I just have a few more comments to make.
All right, we're gonna, we're gonna get you a little time.
Because I failed to mention before that the assessment on my properties did go up this year, so I'm already getting a tax increase, no matter what you set the mileage at, I'm gonna get a tax increase. Um, but I would also like to point out that right now, the court's only meeting three days a week, so if it's that crowded, I'm wondering why they don't meet five days a week? So, you know...
Anything else?
Uh, oh, and about all these other people that we need this money for, are those people not paying taxes, Ms. Gardner? The people that are moving in, because we're growing, so we need more police officers and stuff like that, but I would think our revenues would be increasing, because we, you know, we've got more people moving in. Am I wrong about that?
Well, and as, and as homes come online, yes, we see an increase, but, uh, you can example, if I, if I purchase my house in April, I typically won't recognize that, we won't see that, especially with the new houses that are being built. We'll start to see those revenues come online more than this fiscal year, but then that's year, and they're, and they're actually...
So they're not paying taxes?
They're paying, but it should be paying on the line, because the improvements were made after the tax was, was, was recognized. So we'll see those values come on board.
Okay, but, but pretty quickly, they, they should be paying taxes, along with me, right? It's not just me paying those tax.
Everybody pays taxes, and when you hear people say, well, apartments don't pay, trust me. As a property owner, I'm gonna assess every last one of those apartments, I need to get a property to pay the...
Sir, as a property, as a, as an apartment owner, I concur, you do get taxes on that.